We will now call the Wednesday, June 15, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting to order. All council persons are present and accounted for. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kevin Bash.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renee, if you will lead us in invocation, Renee Parrish.
Would you please bow your head with me? Father, we thank you, Lord. God, that we come before you, Lord, and honor your presence, God, and your sovereignty over our life. And as we come, Father, we ask that, Lord, that you would be with the residents of Orlando, that community, Father, especially, Lord, with those who have lost loved ones in this needless tragedy, Father, God, Lord, this act of evil, Father. That your word tells us in Psalm 34 that you are close to the brokenhearted and you save those that are crushed in spirit. Lord, would you, I would just ask that you would extend, God, your comfort and your strength, God, in an unimaginable place of sorrow and shock and tragedy. Lord, be with those that are recovering in the hospital, Lord. And, Father, as a community here in Norco, Lord, we know what community looks like. And, Father, how that can, Lord Jesus, just be shattered in a moment. But, God, Lord, we know that you are strong and you are great and you are mighty. And in the midst of tragedy, Lord, that you bring forth, God, Lord, the precious gold and the shimmering reflection of your image through the kindness and the bravery of others. And we thank you, Lord, that we see that, Lord, even in times of difficulties in our own lives and in the tragedies that hit the current scene, Lord Jesus. And, Father, Lord, we thank you. We thank you for our community and ask for your continued protection, Lord, and covering, Father, Lord, over our city, Lord, your wisdom and your direction, Lord, to our elected leaders, Father. And, Lord, as we do so, we humble ourselves, God, Lord, and ask of your wisdom, for, Lord, that we are not wise, Father, that you are all wise, all knowing, all loving, and all giving, that you give unto us, as, Lord, we ask. And we thank you for this, bless this time, bring direction, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now I'm going to leave Renee here and I'm going to call up Brian. Renee has a presentation to make to the city of Norco and I'll come down and meet with Brian, all right?
You may direct it this way or do you want me to turn around on that side?
You're giving it to the people.
Okay.
He'll turn you around.
Turn me around. Okay. So I get to do this this way. If you don't mind, I'm going to take a little bit more time than I did last time I did this. Because if I can first address our honorable mayor and council members and city officials and, of course, our residents at large. As the pastor, lead pastor of Beacon Hill Assembly of God in Norco and a way longtime resident of the city of Norco, I just want to familiarize all of you with a member of our congregation whose name is Forrest Halsted. I have a small picture and I'm just going to ask to pass it around to the city officials and up that way to come back. Let me tell you something about Forrest. Forrest became a resident of Norco and a member of Beacon Hill Assembly of God after marrying his second wife. They actually met at the graveyard, visiting the graves of their former spouses, Mary. And this was eight years ago. And Mary had been a longtime resident of Norco. And he soon grew to love his newfound community and our church. Forrest and Mary quickly became a blessing to our congregation. And a couple of years ago, just a few weeks after a young couple in our congregation experienced a devastating loss of their two-year-old child due to complications from hydrocephalus. And then they observed the subsequent efforts by not only family members but our church to raise the funds to bury their baby in nearby Kresslon, Pierce Brothers Kresslon. Forrest and Mary determined to give our church a sizable gift from a charitable trust he had set up to help those in need. A portion of that gift was directed toward our benevolence fund to prevent another family from having the pain of worrying about the cost of a funeral in addition to the tragic loss of a child. Another portion was given to the church to help the community of Norco at large. The Church Board was given the charge to discover those places in our community where a gift could make a difference. And we have endeavored to do so. And over the past 18 months, we have purchased motorized scooters for individuals paid for funeral services, a tractor for a nonprofit in our city, given over $16,000 of scholarships toward the therapy of disabled children and adults, contributed toward shoes for the needy at Norco High School. And last year, we were able, with those funds, to fund party partners for the 2015-2016 fiscal year at the amount of $20,000. Forrest Halsted passed away last month, May 17. While he was alive, he wanted his great generosity to remain anonymous. He's a humble person who didn't want the applaud of other people, just the satisfaction of knowing that someone was being helped. Now pass this time of his departure from this earth and entry into his eternal reward, into heaven, into the arms of Jesus Christ. I have been given permission by his family to publicly share with you his great generosity, his wonderful heart, the gifts that he has given to our church and our community. So it is with great joy, as the lead pastor of Beacon Hill Assembly of God in Norco, to inform you that the Church Board voted on May 16 to donate, in memory of Forrest Halsted, another $20,000 to Party Partners, which will fund this recreational program for developmentally challenged adults operated by the city of Norco Parks and Recreation Department for the fiscal year 2016-2017. There's a few members of our congregation that's here to witness this. We have church going on tonight. So there we go.
Come around here also, I'll hide the back. Do you have anybody who wants to take a picture?
Other members of congregation that are here?
Come on up.
So we have church going on and a number of people are there doing church. Anyway.
Mr. Mayor, if I may say so?
Yes, please.
Renee, on behalf of the City and the Party Partners Group that has been just an outstanding program in our community for a number of years, this check is really a blessing for us to be able to continue to provide that kind of a service to development challenge. One thing I would like to just say, thank you to the Assembly of God Church, Beacon Hill, and you and all your leadership and your board, is that they don't only come with money, but they come with volunteers. So they volunteer on Friday nights, too. So they're there not just with their check, but they're also there with people from their church to help out and working with these individuals and this community. So on behalf of everybody, I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. We are so happy to be able to do this. And for those of you that aren't familiar with Party Partners, because I grew up in this community and did not know, I knew a little bit about it, but until I started doing this investigation and attending, it is just a wonderful, wonderful recreational program for individuals that are often forgotten by our society and for those adults. And it's also very near to our hearts. We have two groups that come to our church twice a week. You know, it's supposed to be doing some work, but they're really partnering with us and we have fun with crafts and after they're finished with their chores and just a time of fellowship. So it's close to our heart. Thank you so much for the city of Norco for continuing over all these years to see that unseen need. And we appreciate that. It makes me really proud of our city.
By the way, Renee is a Norco High graduate. And we've known each other for 50 years.
Don't even say it.
Oh, you graduated 12 years after.
No, no, yeah, I'm a junior.
So next, we're going to bring up the Horse Week folks. We're going to take the money first. Tony, I'm going to give you the microphone.
Thank you, everyone. We're here on behalf of Horse Week and all the volunteers. We had a great year and we're real excited what we raised for the animal shelter this year. So Frank, she'll come up.
No money here?
Yeah, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Horse Week, their volunteers, and especially Tony for always considering the shelter as a donation. Every year, he donates to the shelter some amount and this is the largest ever. It's over $7,000. And it'll go directly to the care and treatment and feeding of the animals. In Norco, everyone's passionate about their animals. Their animals are extended families and we feel the same way up at Animal Control, our staff, our volunteers up there. We treat animals as if they were family. And that's what this goes for, is the caring, feeding, and the loving of the animals. And we really appreciate it. I'd like to thank Tony personally. Thank you.
Now I'm going to turn this over to Berwin Hannah, NART. NART folks, are you going to say something? Oh, well, there you go.
No, I'll go ahead. Last week Frankie called and needed some help with a horse. So I got three members of the NART team and we went and helped him get this old guy up. He was trapped underneath the horse trailer like none of us had ever seen before. They're all different, but he only had a few scrapes and bruises. But we got him up. And the reason we do this is several years ago when the economy got bad, well, they started relying on NART members to go out and help them, whether it's daytime or not. That way it takes less staff time because we're all volunteers. But the people, we went and helped with this horse, they sent us a nice donation of $200 for the NART team. So we appreciate it. Keep it coming our way, Frankie. Thank you.
Now I'm going to bring up the Crown and Rockified School District contingent to give us a little information on what they're up to. It's Ted Rossi.
Thank you, Mayor Bash, council members, Sheriff Coral. We're here just to review a quick update on Measure GG and some other projects that are occurring in the city of Norco. You'll recall in November of 2014, the board or the district was able to pass a $396 million bond, Measure GG, which was set to be allocated in five different series over probably 10, 12, 14 years, depending on how the economy goes and the assessed valuation in the area. So our first phase is approximately $99 million. And I'll show you the projects that are currently going on in Norco. And then Dr. Boster is going to come up and join me, talk a little bit about the career technical aspects of the changes we're doing in Norco High. First, at Norco Elementary, this was the main project we did for Series A in the city of Norco. If you've been by recently, you know, as soon as school went out, even prior to that, we were getting ready for the improvement project. So if you go by currently, you can see that much of these areas in yellow, this is our construction area, this is the current parking lot, and this is the construction area. During the summer, our main focus is to establish safe means of travel for the staff, students, parents, when they come back in early August for the start of the 1617 school year. So you'll see a lot of work going on during the summer and fall. And a lot of that is to establish, like I said, those safe routes of access, the construction area, the staging area, things of that nature. The plan is that this work will take probably 18 months through the balance of calendar 16 and 17. And ultimately, what we'll have there is an expanded parking lot. And I know there's some sentimentality to the trees that were there, but we needed to expand the parking lot. An enlarged administrative area, a new multipurpose area, which they've really never had at Norco. And then the shade shelters are back here. Here's the multipurpose area. Here's a new library up front with some additional testing areas. We've added some modular buildings back there and then auxiliary parking lot in the back, similar to what we have at Riverview Elementary School. So that work is expected to take, like I say, through the balance of the next 18 months. Ultimately, our hope is this will be the new look of the campus. Like I said, two large new facilities up front, expanded parking. This shows you a view of the back of the campus. And then again, some structures to the front. As more progress occurs on this, we'll bring you those and provide those to the city manager. He can distribute those to the council. And we're happy to come back as often as necessary to give you these updates. But very excited about this project, a nice facelift for the campus, some new administrative and other areas for the campus going forward, starting probably in the 1718 school year and then going forward. At Norco, oh, no, here's, I'm sorry. And this was the area, I just kind of threw this in. We tried to be as responsible as possible in contacting all the areas immediately adjacent to the school to let them know about the progress because they have direct line of sight. So this is just a quick map. Here's the school again, here's Second Street. So all those who had an immediate line of sight, we tried to give them notice of what was going to be occurring. So if they saw something, they wouldn't be calling the school district or the city council to know what's going on. We tried to keep them informed. And so far, we've got a good response from that. At Norco High School, and I'm bringing up Dr. Boster. If you've been by over the last several years, you noticed the significant amount of work we put in Norco High, some of the athletic facilities, some of the facelift on the front of the campus. Now we're trying to get into some of the career strands. You know, as we go forward through the 21st century, we have just different career strands that we're trying to address as we go and try to provide those kinds of jobs that people will be needing in the future. So at Norco High, what we've done for this 16th and 17th school year, we relocated the auto shop program to Corona High. And Dr. Boster talked a little bit about that. I know that brings some angst to people that some of those older career technical type of facilities are being moved out of Norco High. But the district has really tried to concentrate specific facilities at all the high schools so that every high school has certain programs and we allow as much inter-district transfer as possible. So in the old auto shop area, we're going to be building a project for mechatronics. And again, I'm going to have Dr. Boster tell you what that is because when the first time they told me about it, I wanted to go look it up because I didn't know what that was either. And then in the K building, we'll be removing some walls and moving into an engineering, manufacturing classroom and lab. And then we'll be expanding the wood shop area. So let me show you what that looks like. Again, these are the classrooms that are there currently. And in manufacturing and engineering, we'll have a big classroom and a big lab as opposed to three smaller areas that we currently have. And then in the auto shop, here's our current configuration. You can see we're going to enlarge the wood shop and then again, provide this mechatronics program, a classroom and laboratory for that new program. So Gina, why don't you come up and provide a little bit of additional information on that program?
So thank you. It's been a long time since I've been in front of this committee. Some of you I've known since I was quite young. And so my background is I did grow up in Norco. I am a Norco High graduate. And my dad still lives in town and goes down to the local donut shop once in a while. But my involvement with career technical education did start basically at Norco High School where I was an agriculture student. And from there, I went into education. I ran the agriculture program at Norco High for 15 years. Robin was part of the ag program at that time. So my background in Norco and career technical education runs pretty deep. So we don't make decisions to change programs just because we want to change programs. Our programs are based on industry needs. So if you look at some of the programs, we've started out in Roosevelt when you go to Corona and you look at the medical programs. Here in Norco, we have started what's called the Supply Chain Technology Program where those classes will directly articulate Corona with Norco College. And let me explain a little bit about what mechatronics means. It's a design process that is unifying several subfields, which includes systems engineering, mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, telecommunications engineering, control engineering, and computer engineering. Now, I can tell you several things that fall under that. But suffice it to say, it's logistics. And I know that you've been keeping track of your job growth in this area and what the industry needs are. And certainly, when you look at the Inland Empire Quarterly Economic Report that just came out in April of 2016, of the five key industries that support the Inland Empire, logistics is at the top of that list. And you can see, I had the opportunity to tour Amazon Plant, the fulfillment center, last week. And even though we think of those jobs, those kind of facilities is not having a lot of jobs because they are going robotic. There's still going to be 1,600 to 2,200 jobs that are going to come out of that facility once it's fully operational. Mecatronics and the logistics in this area, in the Inland Empire, in 2015 added almost 14,000 jobs. In 2016, they're expecting another 13,000 with a median income of almost 46,000. And the Inland Empire has also outpaced the state of California by 41% to 16% for logistics growth. So it is a major economic impact here in the Inland Empire. And with the construction out in Eastvale and the growth out there, we've got a major opportunity to start preparing kids for jobs. And jobs that are just not right out of high school, but if they want to go further up the ladder, they can. So we've made this decision based on economics, based on job growth and the needs of the area. So when you look at the auto shop, I pulled some numbers up recently that across California, there's only about 65,000 auto mechanic technician jobs. And that's, yes, is expected to go up about 15% in the next year, but that's only 75,000 jobs. And we can easily see that logistics is a growing area. So we did move the auto shop to Corona High School. We are putting a lot of money into that program and get it going. But we're certainly putting a lot of money into the program at Norco High. Just for the construction, Ted can talk more about the construction, but the equipment and everything that we're going to put into the mechatronics lab in there, we're talking $250,000, $300,000 worth of equipment. As we redo, I don't see it on here. There's another area that we're redoing for the engineering and manufacturing. With, right here, with manufacturing also being in those top five industry sectors in this area, we're expanding that program. So we'll be bringing in CNCs, a lot more 3D printers that'll go up the ladder and then ultimately to CNCs. At Santiago, we just put in two $50,000 production, I think it's P21 CNC mills. And so we have students getting jobs in those areas also. So that's what this area will become here. And what's that? Oh, okay. So yeah, so we've got, this whole area is going to be the engineering area, engineering and manufacturing. Just wanted to share the reasons we've made those decisions. And it is truly based on economic needs and workforce demands.
Thanks, Gina. Real quickly, I'll wrap up here, sorry. With regard to security improvements, that was another big part of Measure GG. So you can see that right now, the board actually, the last night, approved three different security fencing projects. Project three included those schools in Norco. And we expect those installations to begin by the end of the month and probably work through early fall. And then at Norco High, we've had security cameras. We installed those years ago, but we're upgrading the system, all those systems district-wide. And the Norco High completion is expected by the end of September. So the only project that, the only school you probably don't see anything in is Norco Intermediate. Norco Intermediate will be the major project in Series B of Measure GG, scheduled for about 2018. So that's when security fencing and those similar type improvements we're doing at Norco Elementary will occur. So that's what we wanted to bring you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions and appreciate the time.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Before you go, I just want, I sit on the GG Bond Oversight Committee and I just have to say how pleased I've been with the job you guys have done and how well you keep us informed, the tour of the schools. It's been amazing. And then Berwin and I actually took a tour of Norco High School with the principal. It is amazing what they're doing over there. I mean, I have to disagree with you. My understanding is that some of those kids with the skill sets they're getting, they can actually step into jobs right out of high school. So it's really exciting. I'm sad to lose the shop, but I'm happy to get the mechatronics.
It's a very different world.
No, it's all right because we're so close to the college. It just all flows. So it's really good. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for the time.
Okay. One more presentation. I'm going to call up Pat. Before I turn this over to Pat, I just want to say something about this company. Whenever the owner, whenever I try to thank him for something, he goes, "Yeah, yeah, sure, 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 sure." And he's like off, he's gone. But a couple of things that he's done over the years. I've worked a lot with the owner and the family of this company. In fact, I've known them forever. He's the one that did all the fencing at Field Six, at Six, yeah, the little kids' field, did it all for free, donated all the fencing for that, did all the fencing for the memorial. In fact, when I decided to change the fencing, it was already up. I said, "Oh, come on, could you please change it?" He goes, "Yeah, sure, 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 sure. Got to go, got to go." And but I just really, for years, this company, for years, has been donating to this community. And I just personally want to thank them before I hand this over to Pat. I just really want to thank Valley City Fence for all they've done. So Pat, take it away.
One up?
Oh, Dave. This is the slowest.
Congratulations.
Good.
That's right. You're not running away or anything. So you're the honoree this month for the city of Norco and give it to Valley Fence Company for its commitment to the community through exceptional customer service, attention to property maintenance, and participation in the realization of Sixth Street, in addition to the company's support for local events, as Kevin mentioned, and truly reflects the spirit of Horst Town USA.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Just to be brief about it, and you know, I'll accept this award on my behalf, but obviously, you have to have it back along to the company. And it doesn't just take me, you know, it takes, I want to thank my family who's involved in the business as well. And furthermore, my employees who are, they've been with you for many years. And if it wasn't for a team, you wouldn't have a company because there are challenges in any type of business. So we have a strong team and just keep on moving on. But I sure, you know, I'm very, very humbled on this. I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
So moving on to item one, City Council Communications Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. Would somebody like to start? How about Robin?
Since the last council meeting, the only responsibility I've had was to meet with the Fair Committee today with Councilman Hoffman. We're looking to negotiate a contract for the fair and that has been my only business.
Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. We'll start out with RTA.
We started out with RTA, the buses. We approved the budget last week. Pretty good sized budget to run that thing since we're the second largest transportation, public transportation company in the United States, second only to the state of Connecticut. But two years ago, when they decided to order more dollar ride buses, they will donate a bus to a nonprofit like a city or an organization. So I talked to Brian and he said, "Yeah, go ahead and apply for one." So I did. Well, last week, or two weeks ago, they decided that now they're ready to get rid of those buses. They're going to take all the color off of them and make them look like plain Jane and everything. And they're equipped for handicap, wheelchair, and all that. They're, they're a small bus. They'll haul 12 people, I believe. But some of Brian's staff is going to go meet one, is that tomorrow, Brian, or?
Next week.
Next week and check out a bus and see if it's worth banging in for us. If it is, we can use it for another shuttle around town, help the seniors or maybe when we got an event up at Ingalls, we can shuttle people back and forth from the hotels or whatever. But I mentioned the NART donation hall ago. RCTC is rolling right along. As you know, the construction on the 91 freeway's got everybody in Corona all mad. And they're really having a problem over there with traffic. There's so filed up over there that their Corona Cruiser, their bus line, has really lost ridership during this construction because the buses can't even make schedule. So they're running dollar ride nuts, having to call to go pick up folks and transport them. But they're hoping that they can start seeing daylight by January when the construction starts getting closer to the end. And, excuse me. The train that runs, started running from Paris. It started running last Monday, a week ago. And there's four stations. There's two in Paris, one in March Air Force Base, and one in Riverside. So now people from South County can come up to Paris and catch a train and go to work. They can go all the way to LA or down into Orange County. They make connections over in Riverside. So they're, we're all excited about that. And Vector is really gearing up for the West Nile season. We've already got West Nile here in Riverside County. And they've, I'm sure you read it in the paper, that they've already found one bird, chicken infected with the West Nile in one of their trouts. So they're getting, they're spraying more and more everything. And they're really concentrating on the yellow fever mosquito that causes several different diseases, the worst one being the dangy fever. And that's basically all over the world. It came out here from Florida last year. But people say that you've got about a 50/50 chance of surviving it and that you have such aches and pains before you get rid of it. That it's really, really a bad disease. And one area up in the hills over here off of Wild Horse, we have a catch basin up there that I believe belongs to Fish and Game. That, and what does that mean? That meetings this week, is it Brian, between the city and Vector and Fish and Game?
We're trying to set that up for hopefully next week or the week after. The, the basin is actually owned by the city. However, it's, it has governance and restrictions from Fish and Game on that particular basin.
But it's a good breeding place for mosquitoes. And Vector's having a hard time spraying in there because of the growth around the edge of the pond. And Fish and Game don't want them cutting any weeds. So maybe the city can get something done with them next week with Fish and Game. So, but that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Robin, I want your schedule. I have four meetings. I met with the, I'm the chairman of the Veterans Memorial Committee. And we met and had a critique of our Memorial Day ceremony. And for those that participated, if you weren't here last time, thank you for being part of the continuous flag salute and coming to the ceremony. We, we felt it was a very good ceremony and well received by the public. Just so, we're, we're starting on the Veterans Memorial. Other things are coming up. This Saturday, June 18th, Jeff Anderson for the Wounded Warriors Program will be awarding a dog to Private First Class Thomas O'Donnell. He's a local Norco boy. And then on June 25th is Technical Sergeant Pablo, or Chico Romero from the Air Force. So those are two ceremonies to be held at the Veterans Memorial. Also, I don't see Jeff. Jeff Cahan's leading up our Veterans Day Program scheduled for this year for Friday, November 11th. And then I just want to remind everybody, the BRIC program for the veterans, if you want it to be installed by the November 11th date, that you get your veterans' application in by the end of September. Also have a, the, let me get through here, a meeting with the California Rehabilitation Center along there and City Manager Coro and Councilwoman Grunmeyer were attended. And she got to meet the people. Wonderful. And a good part about that meeting and one of the things, they're going to be starting what they call an accreditation program. And because of that, they are in need of outside laborers, especially in some of the building, in carpenters and plumbers and engineers. They also need food and service workers up there. So if you know of anybody who needs a job, they can go to www.crcr.caledonia.gov. And I'm sure you're going to put it on the newsletter handy, on the weekly newsletter. These are for local positions. You get hired, you go through the process and get it. The one good thing is the city, is the CRC just got awarded $6 million for this accreditation program. So they're going to be doing some upgrades up there over at the prison. And a lot of it's just interior at this point. Hopefully, they won't touch any of the historical buildings. They're going to work with U. Mayor Bash on the church. And they promised us that they will be looking into the sewage, the abandoned sewage treatment plant so we can get rid of that eyesore or at least they can clean it up. So the other meeting, we had the Day of the Cowboy meeting, and Berwin didn't touch on that. From his Texas voice, July 23rd will be here. It's in the afternoon and we got a full day. And I'm sure it'll start, we'll start seeing it in the nuclear, in the weekly newsletter, Berwin, and we'll be heading up and look for a lot of fun stuff going on that day. And then I met with the Navy Facilities Projects People, along with the City Manager and Linda from the North Lake Narconian Club. And I'd say to say Captain Hardy is going to retire in August. We're going to get a new commander up there. The, some of the things that they're doing, the one building is done that they've been renovating for a long time. And the good part is on Building 514 that was in contention on the roof, they were able to save the roof, the old roof, and worked underneath it to get it structured, didn't have to tear it off. So that was a good deal. They had talked a lot of other things going on, along with the, still working on, the photo we'll take stuff there. And they're going to be working, they still don't know what they're going to do. As the one gentleman said, "Yeah, we've been ordered to do it." And it's still in the process, but don't hold your breath on it. And that concludes enough. Thank you.
Greg, thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Mayor. David, congratulations. And I'll give you a way out since you have to be on my job at 6:00 in the morning. So don't feel you have to stay all night. On June 2nd, I attended the Special Board Meeting for the Chino Basin Desalter Authority. And we went ahead and approved the 2016-17 capital and operations budget. Total anticipated water production for Chino Basin is budgeted at 29,900 acre feet for this year. And we're looking at an average cost of water approximately $872 an acre foot. That's what we're anticipating for this year. And then the second item that we reviewed and approved was our urban water management plan, which passed. So it was a busy night and spent lots of money once again. That's all I have.
I had my RCA meeting, Riverside Conservation Authority. These are the flyers, bulletins, newsletters that are sent out. You sort of pass them around. I guess the good news about that is that that's a program which people building can mitigate endangered species in certain areas where they purchased land well away from everybody and create corridors, wildlife corridors. And it's a program that is now being emulated all across the United States. It's so successful. So that's good. And then WRCOG, we talked a lot about the HERO Program, which is just growing by leaps and bounds. Kind of an interesting controversy. There's a lot of companies that want to get in on the WRCOG. And I didn't realize we had one last time we were here that talked about it. The good thing about WRCOG handling the HERO Program is that we don't have to do it. We don't have to worry about the staff. We don't have to worry about all the nuts and bolts of it. It just is something that we can get people to apply for, which is really good. LCF had a wonderful event, by the way. And what was really cool was every city council member was there, working. I mean, Ted was cooking, I was signing people up. Robin ran it, which I was impressed by. Did your son come in fourth? Fourth. And then Greg and Berwin were, were the lag ride, yeah, like sort of lag riders in that little, the little Jeep thing they were driving around. Had our first concert, which unfortunately I had to leave. I had to go to the party partners, but I understand it was really, really good. The prison, it's really kind of cool. I'm doing a project over there that if somebody's interested, there's nine stained glass windows, very historic windows in the chapel there. And we're doing a collaborative project with CRC. And there's, they're all dedicated to fallen soldiers. Like there's the fallen Jewish soldiers by some synagogue that I can't say the name, forgive me. There's the fallen Navy corpsmen. There's different beautiful stained glass. And so I went over there with a stained glass master and he will begin to work on that, I'm hoping, in about a month. He had cataract surgery, but really exciting, really cool. I don't know if people know, but that chapel is a place where it's a safe zone. Prisons, prisons, you know prisons are not safe places. But inside that chapel, everybody goes, nobody fights. And if you just leave them alone, they take care of the problems. So whether you're, whatever your religion, race, color, creed, and they've got, they got a Catholic priest over there. They got a Protestant priest over there. They got a Mormon fellow over there. They've got a Muslim fellow over there. And it apparently works. Not perfect, not 100% as the guards will tell you, but you can rest easy for the most part when you're over there. Really, really exciting stuff. And I just wanted to comment on that roof. That was a huge win for us because, you know, the Navy was really bucking with us. And it was just really, really nice that Captain Hardy decided to figure a way and to do that. And that's all I have. And what we'll do is we'll move on to the consent item. I want to ask, is there anybody that has cards on this?
Yes, Mayor, I have two cards for item, one for item 2C and then another one for item 2E.
Okay. And Greg, do you have anything you want to pull? Anybody, any council people rather?
2D.
Robin? Berwin? By the way, just so you guys know, I have a project I'm doing on Friday. That's why I'm wearing the fuzz on my face. I'm feeling kind of strange about it, so forgive me. So let's go to, so let's go. Do you want to go to the cards first or do you want to have counsel?
Mayor, I need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the remainder?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Councilmembers Grunmeyer, Hannah, Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton. Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we will go to item 2C. A resident is pulled.
Rob. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Robin Cozel. I live at 4001 Hillside Avenue here in Norco. I'm a property owner, both residential and commercial. I recently was in front of the Planning Commission, which was last Wednesday, on a project to modify my building and increase it. I've been doing this for a long time, trying to get to the Planning Commission. There was only a couple of issues. And I felt that staff was on board and that had to do with parking. And I was told that if I got a letter from the American Legion for reciprocal parking between us and them, that that would be the final thing that they needed. Prior to that, it was to possibly cul-de-sac Old Hamner in front of the park and ride, which would give us additional parking. But after that, it was told to me that if I got a letter, that that would suffice. And it wasn't until the Friday before that meeting that I had the SAF report that kind of gutted everything that I thought. And I had a meeting with Steve King probably two weeks before that Friday. And we went over my whole project and everything that was needed. And everything was answered and everything was shown on the plans for the Planning Commission, I felt anyway. And it was, the only issue was parking. And I got a call from Steve King about a week or so before saying, "Get this letter from the American Legion and you're good." And I got the letter from the American Legion. And I turned it into Steve King. And in his staff report, it looked like he was oblivious that it was even asked for. I didn't have the idea of creating it. It was Steve King. And he told me that that came from the city manager. So I thought everything, everything was good. So I went to the Planning Commission and, you know, they basically shut down my project and it had to do with parking. Well, the park and ride has called the city before and told them that I can use the park and ride. It's 122 parking spaces, or 126 actually. And then the American Legion had 64. And they, you know, didn't give any consideration to any additional parking. They said, "Well, you need the parking or you need to have it on your own property." And I have two acres, as most people know, just down the street. I said, "Well, that's commercial land. I have that as off-site parking." But then that was, no, that's too far. Needs to be closer. So what I like to do is have the city council appeal it and send it back to the Planning Commission because I asked for an extra 30 days to get the parking situation corrected. And there's only two ways. One is to find the additional parking, since they won't let me count the park and ride nor the American Legion parking, which both of them have agreed to let me use. And I think I've located other parking. And the Planning Commission would not give me the extra 30 days to come back. So they denied the whole thing. And there was three, three variances I asked for. And the other variances weren't of any concern to them. They were okay. And they voted everything down. Well, with those three variances, it was over $10,000 just to go before the Planning Commission. $2,500 a variance and $3,500 for a modification to my CUP. Do the math, it's about $11,000. Just ask the question if this project is okay. And what I'm willing to do now is either one, locate parking that's closer or make my building smaller to where it meets the needs. And I'd like to meet with Steve King again to find out where the staff is at and, and work things out as opposed to finding out at the last minute. But I wish that the city council will pull the item or whatever is necessary and send it back to Planning Commission. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Bringing back to, any other cards on this issue?
No, Mayor, no more.
I'll now close public hearing, bring back to council. Anybody have any comments?
Since we have to take action on this agenda item, then I have a question for Steve.
Yeah.
That Planning Commission denied this without prejudice, correct?
Correct.
So wouldn't the applicant just get his letters?
parking. And I was informed by the city attorney that actually is a district that's formed for the purpose of collecting fees to purchase public parking lots. And it wouldn't work for what I was trying to get accomplished with the letters, so...
But being denied without prejudice...
He can come back.
He can come back. That's the bottom line. So, and that's no, is there additional fees with that or?
New application fees.
New application fees, okay. Which are $10,000?
Depending on what he applies for.
Ted or Greg, you got anything else?
No, that's all I have right now.
Ted?
Okay, now.
Robin?
Steve, I have a question for you. Do you feel like the cause for denial was because of some miscommunications that may have taken place ahead of time or a lack of notification or misunderstandings?
No, I called the applicant before the meeting to let him know that the process I was trying to get with the letters of approval wasn't going to work. The denial was based upon the fact that he doesn't have enough parking for the proposed expansion.
Was he notified in enough time to come up with some other plans or information before the Planning Commission met? I don't know what other information he could have obtained.
I mean, the only, the only lots around him are the American Legion, which the code requires for, for him to be able to use that parking, it has to be a recorded, shared parking agreement with that property owner in a format approved by the city attorney. And there was no, no time to get that done. And the park and ride lot can't be used. By what's been explained to us, it's only for park and ride. People can park there, but you can't count it towards the parking requirements for a business.
Okay, thank you.
Berwin?
So denied without prejudice, he has to pay additional fees?
Yes.
Now, what if he denied it with prejudice? Does he have to pay the fees or, explain that to me?
If you deny it straight out, our code says you have to wait a year before you can reapply for the same project. If you deny it without prejudice, you don't have to wait a year. But when the Planning Commission takes an action to deny a project, that's basically the end of that project. So anything that comes forward is a new project after that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ted?
Now, I was trying to figure out how to word this. Steve, on this, I mean, based on what the applicant has stated, that he came in, there was some confusion, your confusion on what a parking zone was, our district was. And what he was trying to accomplish was getting additional parking and following what you had directed him to do. Wouldn't it have been better, and this is hindsight naturally, it wouldn't have been better just to postpone this until the following month, rather than trying to send this application through? Because then he wouldn't be incurred with other fees or without, I mean, there seems to be some miscommunication here, and I just, that's what I'm looking at.
The only miscommunication was my misunderstanding of what could be accomplished by that, what that phrase in the code. Prior to the meeting, I sent a letter to the applicant and said, we're not going to be able to recommend approval on this project. If you withdraw now, we can refund all of your fees. But if you choose not to withdraw your applications, then it has to go forward and we won't be able to refund the fees. Now, in the time between that letter and, and the meeting, when I was trying to, this is what you get for trying to work things out. And I was trying to find a solution to his parking problem, and the only thing I found was this section in the code, and then I found out it couldn't work, so...
So we're talking a week, two weeks, ample time for, that he had?
To do what?
To, that he got the notification and the letter that this?
Yes.
So how many days was it?
The letter was sent out probably two to three weeks before the meeting.
Okay.
And that was the second time. We told him at Project Review Board that the project cannot be recommended for approval and told him at that meeting, he could get a refund of his fees if we withdrew his applications.
Okay, thank you.
And Steve, just, I mean, I believe I understand based upon our discussions, that the solution to his problem as a practical matter, the only solution is to entering into a binding reciprocal parking agreement with the American Legion and recording.
Yes, except it doesn't meet his, it still won't meet his parking requirement, so...
Kevin?
Yeah, please.
See if I can put this correctly. My concern is this is a consent item for Planning Commission agenda. It's not an appeal hearing per se. But I think the action of the Planning Commission, that they denied it with prejudice, or I'm sorry, without prejudice, that the applicant has the ability to go back to the, to staff and the Planning Commission to try to work it out. So my recommendation is that, you know, we just approve the plant, this item D.
Could I, I'm wondering if we could waive some of the fees? In fact, maybe waive it so we can go back, maybe drop them, because $10,000 is a lot of money. There was some confusion. Is that possible? How would we do that? Is there any support for that?
Yeah, it's not, I guess that was the point I was trying to get to, this is a consent item and it's not an appeal agenda.
Based upon the practice of the council, really the only thing that's before you tonight is the action to Planning Commission, which you can appeal. I mean, you do have the right to do that. And it would be agenda, it would be agendized for a subsequent city council meeting. And the only impact of that would be that instead of Rob paying the fee to appeal it, and appeal hasn't run yet, right?
It has not run out yet, it'll by Sunday.
Instead of Rob paying the appeal price, the council essentially would absorb it.
Is that a vote? Well, I'll make a motion that I'll appeal it.
Okay, I mean, do you?
I'll appeal it.
Remember, the council's practice in looking at, for example, actions of the Planning
Commission, if a council member would like to have that agenda, appeal it and have it agendized, council member can do that. That's historically what we've always done. And so it would be agendized, but it'd be agendized as an appeal. I mean, there's no discussion tonight, but it'd be agendized as an appeal. Yes, yes.
That's what I want to, that's what I want to do.
But that's the only thing you can do.
Okay, then I will appeal it, put it on a future agenda. Do I need a second or?
Yes, sir, requires a second. Motion. Councilmember Gunnmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hannah?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Ted's, motion 2D, we'll go in order.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only reason I pulled that is I've been starting to look at Planning Commission meetings, and some of them are getting very lengthy and agendas. And I would just like to remind, I just, as long as there's not a problem, I know I incur a little bit financial, but I don't see why sometimes he's not, he cannot have another additional meeting on the Planning Commission, so these people don't have to wait 30 days or longer for approvals on their projects. And with that, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Gunnmeyer?
Yes.
Hannah? Councilmember Hoffman? Mayor Protem Newton?
No.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
A resident has pulled 2E.
Yes, Mayor, Jody Weber?
And I kind of liked the last, I don't want to remind the council, that what's on the agenda tonight is only setting the public hearing.
Got it.
It's not discussion of the merits of assessments, that that's the purpose of the public hearing. And any comments on the substance of the engineers' reports doesn't become a part of the record, and so I'd really encourage anybody, you certainly comment tonight if you'd like to, but to make sure that you show up at the public hearing and make the same comments so they're part of the record.
Got it. So who has this report? Do we want to do that or we want to have Jody speak first? Jody? Come on down.
And Jody may just be standing up to thank the staff for the thoroughness of the report.
Oh, well, thank you, Jody.
Actually, I have, Mayor and Council, thank you, been out of it. I didn't get notice for LMD4 for the May meeting, so I wasn't aware until speaking with Mayor Bash on Saturday that there was this considerable issue with LMD4. So I was interpreting the actions to adopt resolutions which included LMD4, but then in looking at the staff report, there were three options for LMD4. So I don't know if that option was going to be made tonight?
No, that's the purpose of the public hearing.
Okay, so you're adopting at least the report and recommendation of the engineer who drafted, recognizing that there are three proposals for you to consider at the time of the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just say I'm going for proposal number one. Option A.
You correct my mind, but there will also be additional meetings with...
I do have notice of the meeting for next week.
Okay, great.
I did receive that notice. But I would like to say just preliminarily is that I have been coming before you for six years on LMD issues. And I recall, I think it was about five years ago, when we had looked at the electricity issue. So I'm quite astonished that it had even taken another five years to uncover this problem that turns out to be a $440,000 take, taking, unjustified taking. And that's what I'd always encouraged council to actually learn about, the LMDs and actually study this, instead of actually adopting and just accepting what's been put before you. So I certainly appreciate the education that you have taken over the last couple of years. I do understand that mistakes can be made, but this should be a clear reflection that sometimes you can't so just blindly accept certain aspects of complicated nature of things in these LMDs. And, and so I certainly encourage you to continue to expand your education on this. I am going to, I do have one other comment, and I may talk to city engineer about this as well, is that I'm not certain that the numbers, and this is something you might want to look into. Mount Shasta paid for years, and Mount Shasta's adjustments weren't modified, their assessments weren't modified until, I want to say, what, four years ago, maybe even? So the contention that their assessment would not apply if the credit is given back, maybe something we need to look into as well before we consider, final consideration of the assessments. Because they paid for the water, they paid for a lot of things until you realized, again, a mistake was made. They had been overcharged and have been paying for years on end as well. So I just want to say thank you for fighting the error, and I will be suggesting that the full amount be refunded immediately under option A, and I'll do that at the public hearing. Thank you.
I'm speaking for myself. All I can tell you is having been around when all of that started, it has been very frustrating for what, over a decade? I think Berwin, you were around when they formed them, Greg was around. It's been like peeling an onion, you know? But you know, what I'm proud of is that the staff we currently have caught it. And we put it right out there and, you know, we're as transparent as we possibly can be. Any other comments on this?
Yeah, Greg? Yeah, just a clarification. And I had a discussion with Andy about this, that we have the three, I understood that we were just scheduling a public hearing. We have the three options, but with the next week's meeting with the residents, the possibility does exist that there could be an option four or a combination of a mix and a match on various options. Is that a correct assumption?
Ultimately, the city council can modify the engineer's report in any manner you think is legally defensible.
And then just a follow-up, I had a discussion with Andy on, I believe it was like $40,000 in the LMD and like the trail fund, and then there was $20,000 approximately, like in the drainage maintenance fund. Would the appropriate time to discuss that would be at the public hearing? Okay. And we're...
The council as individuals, obviously, unless you have a conflict, can speak with the city engineer between now and then as well. If you have a question.
I don't know if Chad likes to talk to me that much. Thank you.
Any else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, because I'm a resident of LMD4, my, our legal counsel has said I will probably have to abstain from voting on this measure.
And I will comment that, I mean, there is an exception under the public, under the Fair Political Practices Act, which allows council members to vote on matters which affect them but affect the general public in the same manner. So we're going to pursue with the FPPC whether the 575 lots is sufficient to be the public in general, but I'm not sure that it is. So that, in the interest of making certain that you do the right thing, that's right.
Motion to approve?
Councilmember Gunnmeyer? Hannah? Hoffman? Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to 2F. Is this a council pull or?
That item was not pulled.
Oh, okay. Oh, I was going to pull it, I changed my mind. Moving on to public comments. At this time, any people wishing to speak in the audience, please fill out a card. Do you have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, the first speaker is Donnette Wheat.
Hi, Donna, how are you?
I'm good. I just wanted to introduce myself to you, Norco, wonderful folk. I, my name is Donnette Wheat, and I'm the Director of Public Affairs for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And I service the cities of Norco and Corona and have just been recently put into this position. So I'm excited to be able to offer service to your community, our community. I do attend church here in Norco and have been here in this community over 20 years myself. So it is deep to my heart, and I've raised my kids here. I go, I work for the school district. And I just want to make you aware that we have a website that is national and going international that's called JustServe.org. And any organization can submit projects, service opportunities to this website. And it's my girlfriend that reviews them, and then we post them up, and we are able to help get volunteers to accomplish amazing things. And we just had an example of a four-hour Saturday morning, got five projects, or about between 250 and 300 volunteers, and accomplished five projects in four hours' time. So excited about this. It's something that can happen any day of the year, JustServe.org. Then the other thing I want to invite all of you to, I'm also on the Interfaith Council for Corona-Norco Interfaith Association, and we have our summer barbecue.
And I service the cities of Norco and Corona and have just been recently put into this position. So I'm excited to be able to offer service to your community, our community. I do attend church here in Norco and have been here in this community over 20 years myself. So it is deep to my heart and I've raised my kids here. I go, I work for the school district. And I just want to make you aware that we have a website that is national and going international that's called JustServe.org. And any organization can submit projects, service opportunities to this website. And it's my girlfriend that reviews them, and then we post them up and we are able to help get volunteers to accomplish amazing things. And we just had an example of a four-hour Saturday morning, got five projects, or about between 250 and 300 volunteers, and accomplished five projects in four hours' time. So excited about this. It's something that can happen any day of the year, JustServe.org. Then the other thing I want to invite all of you to, I'm also on the Interfaith Council for Corona-Norco Interfaith Association, and we have our summer barbecue Monday night. It's in Corona at Mount Gate Park at 6:00. Bring your own meat and a dish to share, and just look forward to having a good time. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
John Fittrell.
Hi, John.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk about Mustang Lane, which I made copies for the council. On page one, I highlighted where it says Mustang Lane was dedicated to the City of Norco for street purposes. That was studied, signed by the city engineer, who was the engineer at the time, was Herb Webb. On the second page, it's where the map was divided. It has the name Mustang Lane added to it, which was also surveyed and signed by the city engineer as a public highway or a public street. And on the third page is what every homeowner on the street got when they purchased a home, in which I went down to City Hall, and this is what they showed me as their record. And it's a funny map which shows Mustang Lane as half a street, halfway down the street. But it also shows Mustang Lane, whereas next to it, I drew a yellow line, which is Laredo Drive, which is a private street, and it doesn't show on the survey map. So all I've tried to do is get potholes fixed on my street. They say it's a private street, but nobody can show me anything different than that. And that shows it's dedicated to the City of Norco. And it's signed by the city engineers.
First I've heard of this, but that said, the offer of dedication doesn't necessarily mean that the city accepted it for maintenance purposes. I'm not saying that the city didn't, but that's the real question. Simply because the city engineer signed the map, which reflects the dedication, doesn't mean the city accepted the dedication.
But it shows this, going from map one to map two, where it was just a dedicated street.
Again, it's pretty typical. It's pretty typical for cities to not accept dedications of streets for maintenance purposes until after the street's constructed, or maybe never. But I'm not suggesting that's the case because all I know is what you handed us.
Well, that's all I have to go by. As a, as a city homeowner, I've lived here for 28 years.
Yeah, so thanks on that, we'll look.
And I've been talking with the city engineer now for four months, and they keep saying they're researching and researching it. All they're searching for is a reason to deny me to get my street fixed. They can't show me where it was put in as a private street. Nobody's came up with that yet. Well, I mean, I'm just trying to get it on public record or something, because as a homeowner, everybody on the street gets that funny little map. It doesn't say private street, it doesn't say anything.
Yeah. I can't make any comments other than what I made because I don't know anything more than what she handed out.
It's the street. You can't even drive down it. We're going to have to have a four-wheel drive pretty soon.
So just as a question, so this one's December '73, this one is May '74, and then this one from...
That's the one that everyone...
October '74, has the street gone again, or it's gone? So I guess, I guess what we need to do is, one of you, one of you has to look at it. Any comments by council? But I mean, it's funny because you have two full streets prior to '74, then you got...
In addition, unfortunately, you know, I probably made more, I don't make any comments about this specifically because we don't have the facts, but remember that this is a public comment and council really can't engage in this.
You know, doesn't this, excuse me, doesn't the city have some kind of an insurance policy? The damage to the street is done by the trash truck going up and down the street. Does a U-turn at the end of the cul-de-sac digs out a big hole at the end of the street? Doesn't the city have any recourse with Western Waste or anything? Because they're doing the damage to the street.
So, Hoffman, what do we do?
Sounds like staff is working on it, but staff will obviously talk to me as well.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Well, as first time I've heard of this issue, I think, just acknowledging staff, they've been working on it, but I'll have to get caught up with what the issue is, and we'll see if we're able to, again, which I agree, we have to confirm if we've ever accepted the dedication. That's a key factor on, on anything that we can or can't do.
I've been talking with Sam Nelson for four months.
So I'll get a prize with staff and kind of get up to speed and we'll see what we can determine.
We'll get on this, all right?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Can I ask it of Chad so I'm not responding to the homeowner?
Yeah, do your luck to him.
That, and you may want to pay attention. I live on a private street. When we went to refinance, I had to bring documentation to Wells Fargo, like the letter from the city to say, I lived on a private street. Okay? So maybe there's something with his mortgage or that you may want to look into through the lending agency. Because I had to jump through some hoops to show that it was private. So maybe it works its way in the opposite manner. And I can give you more details later, Chad, on it. But there was a specific that I had to navigate.
Can you keep me in the loop on this? Thanks. Anybody else?
Barbara Schultz.
Hi, Barbara.
Hi. My name is Barbara Schultz. I'm a resident on Fourth Street, 1533 Fourth Street. And my neighbors have been a problem for three or four years already. I have pictures of their house that I've given to you, and my neighbor just came in, and we need to know if that house is residential or commercial because he is advertising it on the internet as a safe haven. I have the picture that he just brought me, I will leave for you guys. And it says that it's a halfway house. Is, I need to know if it's recorded that way. It's, the letter says it's through social services, that it's an adult residence for six different residents. And six months ago, it was condemned. So now we've got people coming with knives, waking the whole neighbor up at 4:35 in the morning with police and helicopters and...
We can't comment to you, unfortunately.
I know, I know that. But I definitely want you aware because my neighbors had to leave because they go to work and they get up at 3:00 in the morning. But we're planning on coming to every meeting until we find out something. Because as far as I know, it's a residential home. And now he's advertising it as a halfway house, and we've got traffic coming in there night and day. Abandoned cars back there. I'll leave this picture for you. And the, the statement on what it is, his name, it's called Lightfoot Haven. And it says it's through the social services, and if that's the case, I think we should all be able to put trailers in our backyard and have people run them out. I love Norco because it's so nice. This is a problem, and I know you can't answer me, but thank you for the time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Roy Hungerford.
Hi, Roy.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to thank whoever put the speed monitoring sign on Fifth Street by Public Works. Thank you very much. I can tell you, they work. I see it every day. So thank you guys for that. Also, you're talking about the budget. I just wanted to, and maybe it's in there, I'm not sure, but if we can get motorcycle cops back in town, I think we were talking last time, like $250,000 per cop or something like that. But really, we need to start looking at the traffic again in town. I've seen people blow through stop signs. I've been passed on Valley View, you know, with cars doing 50 miles an hour or more. So I think it's time that we start looking back at the traffic enforcement in town. It would be a great thing. Last thing is the trail fencing. The new trail fencing looks amazing. Good job with that. I love driving up Wild Horse. You know, Ted waves to me all the time and, but the trail fencing is amazing. Thank you.
Thanks, Roy.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Bringing it back to council. Moving on to 5A, approval and adoption of Norco operating budget for fiscal year 2016/2017 and authorizing appropriations therefrom. She, he went out to talk to the Fourth Street person? Is he talking to her?
That was the picture we saw, right?
Yeah. You know about it?
No, we're looking.
Yeah, Gina, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm pleased to present the fiscal year 1617 proposed budget. As you recall, on May 4th and May 18th, we staff held a, conducted budget workshops for your review of the budget as well as the CIP, which we'll discuss in the next item. The recommended budget for fiscal year 1617 is $35,188,341. This includes the general fund, water fund, sewer, gas tax, and PDS, miscellaneous grants, CDBG, and AQNB funds. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund with total projected expenditures of $17.8 million and revenues of $17.4 million. The gap that you see, and will be covered by reserves, and the gap is $394,000. And some good news, at the end of fiscal year 16, June 30th, we are projecting $8.9 million in total fund balance, which is an increase over the year of $639,000. We are choosing to apply the $394,000 difference between revenues and expenditures, apply a part of that difference, resulting in a projected fund balance for this coming fiscal year of $8.5 million. The total estimated water fund expenditures, and speaking about the water fund, is $9.7 million, and total estimated revenues, total $10 million. A rate analysis study has been included in the budget for both the water and sewer funds, which will focus on looking at the rate structure and the issue associated with conservation that has impacted our revenues greatly over the last few years. The estimated sewer fund expenditures, $6.2 million, and revenues are $6.4 million. Summary of, we have a summary of funds listed on attachment A, and we will continue on in terms of the summary of key operating budget drivers. We are maintaining existing service levels, but I will comment later on increasing personnel. That's included in this budget. The budget provides also for an estimated 7% and 4.6% projected increase in sheriff and county fire contracts, respectively. It also provides for 3% pay adjustments, with employees picking up an additional 2% of employee CalPERS contribution. In fiscal year 1617, the city employees will now contribute the full 8%. The net cost impact of 1% total on the budget. The unfunded liability for miscellaneous plan for CalPERS has decreased over this period of time from $8.8 million to $8.3 million. And this is primarily due to higher investment earnings of 18% at that time, which is two years ago. The safety plan annual contribution has increased from $52,000 to $297,000 in the coming year. The unfunded liability, though, has decreased from $4.1 to $3.9 million. As you know, this is a closed group this time, and PERS has applied its revised assumptions to this group. And that's one main reason why we're having an increase in our payment. We are going to be bringing forward most likely a budget study session in detail on this topic, as well as our OPEB, our post-retirement healthcare liability. And referring to that, the budget also includes a total of $400,000 set aside to pay the post-retirement healthcare liability. The projected unfunded liability has increased from $10.3 million to $12.8 million due to increasing retiree costs. The value of assets has also increased from $5.1 million to $6 million, slowing the growth of the unfunded liability. This is directly attributed to positive investment earnings, as well as a continued contribution of $400,000 a year. And continuing the summary of key operating drivers. Sales tax projections have been revised to a 3.4% decrease, incorporating the discontinuation of the triple flip, but also a slight increase, a conservative increase, in sales tax. As you recall, this decrease was about 4.6% in the budget study sessions. Also, we have revised the franchise fees, which are increasing 8.7% due to contractual franchise rate increases that will be presented tonight as well. The water and sewer fund revenues are based on a current rate structure and conception levels. The impact of water conservation is factored into the revenue projections. The one-time measures to balance, or to attempt to balance this out, the water fund, are $1 million in sale of water and a transfer from the water capital fund for $700,000. The sewer fund revenues projected on current rate structure, is projected on current rate structure and expenditures, this does not include a $250,000 transfer to the sewer capital fund this year. The general fund revenues have increased by a net of $108,000 due to a projected increase of $82,000 in sales tax. As I just mentioned, overall, it'll be decreasing, but we do, we're seeing, it's decreasing due to the tripled flip, which is one-time, a reconciliation, but we do see our base increase. And the good news is that we have, our sales tax revenues are at their pre-recessionary levels. This is the first time we have seen that. The adjustments to other revenue categories are not significant. In terms of general fund expenditures, we are proposing the painting of Marino Arena for $65,000, the conversion of three part-time positions to full-time, a maintenance worker in the building maintenance division for George Ingalls Equestrian Event Center, and management analyst position in economic development and administration, and an administrative clerk position in recreation. We are also adding a reclass from accountant to senior accountant, a reclass of the facility position, facility accordion position to recreation supervisor, and a salary adjustment for the accounting manager position. We are also including the continuation of the current level of service to party partners, and we will take into consideration the donation that was presented this evening and make adjustments. We've also included a minor adjustment to the Sheriff's Department budget of $5,700, which is paying for the T-1 line that's here at the substation. General fund expenditures are decreasing by a, the removal of a rollover in the budget regarding the Lake Nacornian Foundation item. Basically, what we did was during the first budget, we included what we hadn't paid out at that time in the new budget, but we received some bills, we've paid that out, and we have about $16,000 left in the future budget, in 1617 budget. And as a result of some of these adjustments that you've seen, we've had some reduced personnel-related costs of $3,000. This provides overall a balanced general fund by using, like I said earlier, $390,000 of prior year revenue to balance the current year budget. And staff is available for any questions you may have.
Berwin, you want to start?
No, we pretty well went over all this during the public hearings and the meetings we had, and I appreciate all the hard work that you and your department have done to keep us on the road here. keep us on the road here. Thank you very much.
Gina and Brian were able to answer my questions that I sent to them this morning, so thank you for that. I kind of echo what Berwin had to say. You guys were very thorough in your reports through the two workshops, so thank you.
Ted?
No, I'm gonna copy that. It was a good, good report, Gina, and thank you for the updates. I like it when people can catch their own mistakes and fixes, so thank you very much. Good report.
Gina, you, compliments to you and your staff and all the work that you've put into this. Just one of my biggest concerns, though, is with the unfunded liabilities, that is this something that's just going to chase us forever as these keep growing? And it's just not a Norco problem. It's, you know, the entire state, but is there like a date this is all going to implode? Yeah, I know.
To answer your first question, yes, it's with us forever, except maybe the fire safety item. But every city is having this issue. We were lucky a few years ago to get 18% investment earnings, which really helps on the pension side, on the OPEB side, or the retiree health. We're contributing $400,000 a year, and I can tell you a lot of cities are contributing nothing. And the next year, you'll see some changes, ongoing changes in our financial statements regarding the application of those unfunded liabilities. So the city is going to be held more accountable on that, it's more transparent, but the bottom line is it will be increasing, especially as we age and health costs increase, and they take more into account the aging of the population, considering their, and a lot of other details. Calpers has made this easy in one level for cities to apply. They've kind of smoothed out the rates. They're giving us projections now. Over the next five years, you'll be hearing more about that. But I should also note as well, it isn't just cities, it's also sheriffs, fire, everybody are impacted. And this is a part of our strategic planning where we're actually looking at how do we mitigate that increase over the years so that our service levels can be maintained. But it's a very good question.
Which then makes it difficult to increase service levels, like either with police or fire, with the unfunded liabilities, just... But there's certain, are there not different cities or agencies that don't fund at all?
Yes, and that will be...
Doesn't that, you know, are we going to get caught up in that? I guess that's kind of my concern.
Well, we have our own pool. So, well, actually, I think we, we're a part of a co-mingle pool, as being a small city. But in terms of OPEB or retiree health, that's our own. But it's, you've got to rely on PERS to provide that feedback and keep all the other cities in line. And there was actually a push from the league, as you might be aware of, to provide forecasts that have basically tracking mechanisms or benchmarks to identify those cities. And it's something that the city can choose to do at this time, but I think it's going to be a requirement going forward by auditors, if not bondholders, and everybody. It's, it's a key issue, and it's a reason why it's going to be in our financial statements. It's important.
Thank you.
But I can, I can let you know that this is one of the better cities that does contribute and is very mindful of the contributions and the unfunded liability. Actually, the first city I've worked for that's really, really mindful of it, so.
Yeah, my concern is that if it goes belly up, we're the only ones that have paid in. And that's a little bit, but you know what? We're doing our job, and I think we're current, so, pretty almost, sort of. I mean, we're got a payment schedule. Good report. Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, this is a public hearing.
Oh, do we have any cards?
No cards.
Okay, a closed public hearing.
Mayor Portem Newton, you're making the motion, and who's the second? Okay. Council members, Gremeyer, Hannah, Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to 2B, 5B, approval of five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2017 through 2021. Gina, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. This is the request to approve and adopt the capital improvement program for fiscal year 1617, or 2017 through 2021. But basically, the appropriations for fiscal year 1617, and I won't get into detail. You've seen the presentation. I will just provide you the fund balance totals across the sections. We are looking at a beginning fund balance, an ending fund balance from July 1st, 2016, of $14.1 million. We are estimating revenues of $5.2 million for fiscal year 1617, and estimated expenditures of $12.8 million. We are doing quite a few, quite a few projects, and that is an ending balance at the year-end of $6.5 million. We are taking significantly from prior year fund balance to do those large projects. And staff is available for any questions you may have.
Bring it back to council. Any questions? Greg?
Just to be obstinate, that what came up in a workshop, and this is under the sewer expenditures, the approximately $200,000 to relocate the meters for the Navy, and I'm just going to object that we'd spend that money.
We, I chose to leave that in the budget for now, only as a placeholder, but I mean, I've talked with staff a little bit, and when we address the issue of going forward, we believe there are previous agreements that would basically negate the need for that money, but if, should we need any funding for that, it's already in place designated for that project, and we use, otherwise it'll just go towards other projects as they come up. So we chose, I chose to cap it as just as a lineup, just in case.
And I just want my objection noted to that.
I'm going to just jump on that. I too object to that.
With the understanding that we're just approving for 1617, but in the workshop, you guys gave us the five-year.
Correct.
Doesn't look so pleasant. What is the protocol, or how do we go about looking beyond just this year and kind of taking our problems head-on? You know, there's been work done previously by an ad hoc committee. When does that stuff come up, or when does that come before the committee, or do, for the council, or do I have to request that, or how does that work, so that we're not sitting here next year going, well, this looks really bad, what are we going to do now?
As you know, we had, recently had the strategic planning workshop. Part of that workshop established as one of the key priority items to establish funding for infrastructure. And staff was charged with going back and coming up with action plans that are going to put that in place. We're currently working on that. The idea, staff is developing those action plans. We hope to complete those action plans and run it through the various commissions of the city council, hopefully before the end of this calendar year, and have the city council approve that. And once that is approved, there will be a series of action plans that we need to put in place in order to establish funding for future infrastructure needs.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All done, Robin?
Mm-hmm.
Berwin? Let's open public comments. We have any cards?
No cards.
Just to put it out there, because it's a public hearing, if there's something we should say, fill out a card. You have about 10 seconds. If I see you going doo, 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 doo. All right, I will close public hearing. Bring it back to council. Second, Robin seconded.
Councilmember Gremeyer, Hannah, Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to 5C, rate adjustments proposed by waste management of the inland empire. Finance officer?
Yes, I will, this staff report is here to request adoption of resolution number 2016-41, approving cost of living adjustments for waste management for the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. And I'll read from the staff report on some of the detail. The current franchise agreement between the city and waste management was executed on May 7, 2014, and became effective July 1, 2014. The 10-year term of the agreement will expire in year 2024. The agreement provides that the franchisee is entitled to adjust rates on an annual basis to cover increased costs due to inflation based on increases in the CPI and pass-through costs incurred by the franchisee for disposal of the solid waste. The agreement includes an increase in franchise fee beginning July 1, 2014, and each year going forward, the franchise fees will increase from 10% to 17.9% during the 10-year term. Beginning July 1, 2016, the franchise fee rate shall be 14.74% for residential service and 17.9% for commercial service. The agreement also includes implementation of scout fees. Scout fees start at $8.870 and increase to $43.22. The increase in scout fee was approved to be spread over, out to over five years. Waste Management submitted its proposed rate adjustments March 31, 2016. The proposed rates reflected 0.91% CPI change from January 2015 to January 2016, and an increase of franchise fees rate from, I believe I might have said that incorrectly, but from 13.6% to 14.74% for residential services, and 15.27% to 17.9% for commercial. The past two rates are as follows. The solid waste disposal tipping fee increase to 2.02% for fiscal year 1617. The solid waste disposal component of the rate will increase from $36.47 to $37.21 per ton. The residential recycling processing fee, there'll be a charge of $0.40 charge per month per home to address the new MRF recycling processing fees. And this is basically the result of the commodity market. Recycling isn't as lucrative as it used to be, and it has to be taken to the landfill. So that cost is increasing. The green waste disposal cost fees are increasing to 50 cents, increasing by 50 cents, and the green waste disposal component of the rates will increase from $28.75 to $29.25 per ton. The manure cost, disposal cost fees are increasing by 50 cents. The manure disposal component of the rates will increase from $19.75 to $20.25 per ton. And regarding scout fees, the current agreement between the city and waste management became effective, like I indicated, July 1, 2014, and the new fee for scout service was established. In the prior year for 2015, the scout fee was not implemented. It basically was not a part of the budget process at that time. It was, I'm not searching for the word, it wasn't applied, and due to, I'm missing the word.
It wasn't charged.
It just wasn't charged. Then, but it has, it's going to be charged this year, and they're extending it out. It was going to be applied over five years. We're now extending out to six years because we did miss it last year. And the rate, the effective rate will be 40, it's going to extend from, would have been $25.66, but will only be charged at the 2015 rate of $16.92. This will extend, effectively extend the rate of the scout fee to six years, reaching $43.22 on July 1, 2020. Additionally, there is organics recycling in response to AB 1826. It is called a mandatory commercial organics recycling program, and it's a new organic rate. This requires businesses generating eight-plus cubic yards of organic waste to recycle this waste on and after April 1, 2016. This law also requires that on or about the date of January 1, 2016, local jurisdictions across the state implement an organic waste recycling program to divert organic waste generated by businesses, including multifamily residential dwellings that consist of five or more units. And there's a note here that multifamily dwellings are not required to have a food waste diversion program. The city has very few businesses that meet the current threshold, and participation in the organic recycling program is voluntary, even though the title says mandatory. Organic waste means food waste, green waste, landscape and pruning waste, non-hazardous wood waste, and food-soiled paper waste that is mixed in with food waste. And my understanding is that the, currently In-N-Out is looking at doing this on a voluntary basis. It is very expensive to do this kind of recycling or this kind of program. It is the city's attorney, attorney's, let's see, pursuant to, pursuant to section 6 of the franchise agreement, waste management is required, upon request of the city manager, to meet and confer with the city to review and discuss commercially reasonable technological advances for post-collection processing, handling, diversion, or resource recovery, and the potential application to the city. Waste Management has met with the subcommittee of the city council and staff to discuss and review available alternate disposal options for organics and manure, including the potential use of CRNR facility that is expected to be operational soon. While there are potentially available options, the cost at this time is still very prohibitive. At this point, the new rates will become effective on July 1, 2016. Waste Management staff is here if you have any questions regarding this item.
Council? Everybody have any questions? Berwin, Robin, Ted, Greg, Ted?
Just, just to confer with, Gina said, Councilman Newton and I did meet with waste management people, so we confirmed that. They met with us and trying to work with the green waste and manure projects. Thank you.
So Gina, this, and this may be something Julie or Glenda's going to have to answer. The larger costs, which really affect all the residents, the heart, at least the animal keeping residents, is the scout service, but I, I get that from when we had our ad hoc committee and how we tried to spread that cost out so the burden wouldn't be as great right out of the gate. But it may seem like a little thing, but I have heartburn with this residential recycling processing fee, that on the surface, it looks like that, that material's taken to a MRF, and I would assume that could be the waste management's material recovery facility in Marino Valley. Is that the case, that our mixed solid waste is being transferred to Marino Valley, or is it going to the landfill? And then, the next part of the question, if I misunderstood, you let me know, that part of that fee is because of the decline in the commodities market?
For recycling.
I think you made a reference to that?
Yes.
And?
I think it's in regards to the MRF recycling processing fee.
Okay, that, that the commodities market has dropped, so, so what? I guess is my answer to that, is that if, if waste management cares to deal in the commodities market, do they share the rewards with us when commodities go up? Seems like we're kind of supplementing their, their game in the commodities market. See, but, and I have a compliment later, so...
Okay, thank you.
Don't...
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and city staff and residents. Thank you for the opportunity to answer your question. We, we use Burtec as our recycle, recycling processor, and this year, we received a letter from them telling us that they were going to be implementing a recycling processing fee. That was in the amount of $15 per ton. And the reason why we come to you is because for the past four years, unlike how recycling was in the beginning, which, you know, was profitable, we are seeing for the past four years that recyclable, the recyclable market is not doing so well. This is attributed to one of our major buyers, which was China. You know, they're not buying our products. They're using virgin materials because it's a lot cheaper. So this is not to say that if the market doesn't turn, these fees will be removed. I hope that answers your question. And also, a lot of the times, these, the facilities that process the recyclable...
And also, a lot of the times, the facilities that process the recyclable commodities have staff that are now, you know, labor costs here in California have increased, so there's quite a bit of different elements that have been attributed to the increase that we are seeing currently.
So our gray bins, our recycling bins, go to?
BRTech.
BRTech, but either Aquamont's or Napa Street, in fact, Hannah.
Contana.
So, none of our grays going to El Sabrante?
No, I think what the reference to the landfill part is that one of the things we need to do is educate the public also on recycling, right? We are seeing an increase in contamination in our recyclables, so obviously, if those items are contaminated, they will have to be discarded as trash because the quality of the recyclable is not, you know, up to par.
So commodities market goes back up. This fee is always.
No, it will be, it's kinda like with any, like water. Once the, if the market does get better, these fees would obviously would be deducted.
So years ago, when we gave you the increase for the fuel surcharge, when fuel went to $5 a gallon, and then when it went down to $2, did we get a credit back on the fuel surcharges? I don't believe so. No, you just show me.
You said five years ago, so then I'm handing it over to Julie.
It's not you, Glenda.
Well, we did.
I apologize, I shouldn't be, I don't recall us getting a credit back on fuel surcharges.
That was something that the council at that time, I think it was established for only two years, and we made the adjustment. And today, actually, we run completely 100% natural gas, so our costs are, like, I think it's, I think we're paying $1.50.
Well, I apologize, Tony, I wasn't on council at the time.
You were not on council at the time. The only thing I'd just like to add, that Glenda was explaining, is that this increase from BRTech, and this is something is nationwide. It's not something, you know, we had the fuel surcharge, it was something that was hitting all of our pockets. I drove a Suburban, it was costing me $120 to fill my truck. It was very apparent to everybody nationwide. It's in our industry, this is something that everybody's talking about. Waste Management in general, in the last three years, closed 39 MRFs across the country because the cost for the recycling cannot pay for the facility or the employees to process the recyclables. So this is something that's impacted our industry, it's impacting every waste hauler in the country. A lot of the buyback centers that you see behind the Stater Brothers, those facilities are closing because they can, the costs that they, the material that they get is not covering the cost even to man the guys that work the little, they look like the storage vans behind Stater Brothers. So it's really, I have to say, it's part of, you know, minimum wage increases, Obamacare, and then compiled with the reduced cost for recycling commodities. It's just really affecting us. And like I said, we've used BRTech forever, they're a good business partner, and we got the letter, our fees increased March 1. So they gave us a cost, which the part I wanted to add, it's outlined in the scope of the contract, it's similar to now a green waste processing fee or disposal fee. They call it a recycling process fee, and that letter from BRTech was included in our rate package to your staff. So, and our hope is, is if they reverse it and the commodities change, we hope, Greg, that they're gonna come to us and say, oh, okay, well, it's not $15, it's maybe $8. I can't answer, I don't know if it'll ever go away, but our hope is, is that it will. I mean, we don't like paying it either.
This is just a pass-through, then? It's dollar-for-dollar?
Exactly, dollar-for-dollar. There's, yeah, it's dollar-for-dollar pass-through. And like I said, it went into effect March 1. We're not asking for retro, we're just with our rates. And again, it's the same for all the cities that we serve, that we take our materials there.
Okay, so, currently having a problem with BRTech, so I don't know if I want, want to give any resident to give them $0.40 more. So let me ask you, and I'll give you the, hopefully it's the compliment, on a high-side bin on a 40-yard container, and I guess this'd be for the audience also and for council, when you see on social media the comments about manure and, you know, that Waste Management is not a good partner, and we should go, you know, get other bids and consider BRTech, and you know the whole nonsense that you read. On a 40-yard container, there's a cost, okay, to take it to the landfill. If I was to keep that container at my house for more than a week, like for two weeks, do you charge me any rental fees?
We not, we not charge rental.
And just so that you can tie this together when people tell you, well, we should be going to BRTech or others, that if you get a 40-yard container for BRTech and you leave it at your house, takes you a month to fill it up, you get the pleasure of paying $243 a week rental on top of the bin and the disposal cost. So, just use that for ammunition when you throw it out there, that it's a $1,000 bump if you leave a container for a month. So, I'm not gonna support the 40% because it's going to a competitor. Okay? That's all I have to say. Or the 40 cents.
Ted? Anybody else?
My heartburn, of course, is the scout service. I happen to believe that it should be leveled out amongst all the residents. I think that the scout service, and as it grows, is going to chase more and more horses off of the large lots. That is absolutely undeniable. And if we're Horsetown USA, we gotta have horses in the town. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve, oh, public hearing, sorry, I forgot. Do we have any, thank you, Julie, do you have any cards?
No cards on this item.
All right, I will close public hearing, bring it back. I would like to make a motion that we approve this, but that we, I guess, level out the entire scout service to every resident. The city of Norco just pennies a month.
Norco is dead.
Yeah. And dies for lack of a second.
You know there are issues with that.
I get it, I just wanna make sure that people understand where I'm coming from. Do we have an alternative motion? Okay, move to approve as-is?
Yes. Is it your second? Councilmember Hannah, is that your second?
No, he's approving as-is. Mine died for a lack of second.
As it is.
Yeah. Oh, so you made the motion? Greg did?
Greg did, yes.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, I'm, you know what, you know what, the last I heard is you weren't gonna approve the 40 cents, so I'm confused. Oh, okay, all right. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Greg, I apologize.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Newton, seconded by Councilmember Hannah, to approve. Councilmembers Grunmeyer, Hannah Hoffman, Mayor Pro Tem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll take a break now for 10 minutes. Moving on to 5D, approval of 2015 Urban Water Management Plan, Director of Public Works, Chad.
Thank you, Mayor. We're conducting this public meeting to approve the Urban Water Management Plan of 2015. I'd like to point out that this plan is actually about a year behind because the state just came out a couple months ago with their actual requirements for this plan. So even though it's, we're 2016, it actually should have been implemented last year, just so we were just waiting for the state. So we are on schedule, just in case there's any questions regarding that. We're gonna review the, real quick, the general highlights of the plan, and afterwards, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions that council may have related to anything within the actual plan. It is lengthy, it is wordy, but it meets all the requirements of the state. So we'll go through this real quick. Does it work? You know? Yep, it's, oh, no, sorry, it worked. So, it's blocking that over there.
School district had no trouble with this?
I know, I needed school to help me out with this. In fact, you know what? Just, I'll get up here, a little coconut. Don't mind. Okay. There we go. So, the city of Norco must comply with Urban Management Act, it must be updated every five years. Just a little bit of history, the city of Norco has never adopted Urban Management Plan. It's been going on for over 20 years, and city of Norco has not adopted one, so I'm really hopeful we can do this for the first time. So we must have an approval of Urban Management Plan in order to obtain state water grants or loans, so it does have important factor as far as what state looking at us for projects. It applies to retail and wholesale agencies, and it basically encompasses our water projections, our planning, related to all the way through 2020. And I do want to emphasize, this is a planning document. We are not held by anything that we indicate in this document regarding any way we're trying to, related to housing or type of customers. It just gives a stated overview of our current situation, where we think we're gonna go by 2040, and how we plan to deal with those issues, if we have any types of water shortages. So the plan preparation, we develop a forecast of the water demands through 2040. We reviewed existing water supplies to meet projected demands. We talked to regional suppliers to verify projected purchases of water, demands will be available, because again, we're partners with CDA with Arlington, we wanna make sure that those facilities are gonna be run and are gonna be available in the future. And we also consider measures to ensure supply reliability and conservation. We're just, we wanna do internally our own to make sure that we're making endeavors to make sure our existing supplies or wells are functional, they're being replaced on a routine basis, and we're still trying to encourage measures of conservation, which keeps our water demand down. So our general system description, we're operating a potable water system that covers about 15 square miles, serving a population of about 25,000, a little, under 26,000, approximately 7,500 service connections in the city. We have 120 miles of pipe, four wells, seven reservoirs, we have a treatment plant, and we have four purchased water connections where we can get water from local agencies. So water system use, average demand over the last five years has been about 8,000 acre feet. However, that's changed in recent years. Approximately 60% of our purchase is from purchased water from our take-or-pay obligations, 38% we try to get from our wells. 2014, our demand, the previous year had gone down about 71 acre feet, that's about when conservation started to kick in. This current fiscal year, it's definitely gone down, so now we're at about 6,300 acre feet, so we're definitely conserving. Right now, we're about a 25% of the state's mandate that they asked to do, we're about 25%. They wanted 30, 36%, we're at 25%, which is, I think, for this community and the type of large lots and animal keeping, it's very good that we actually achieved that. 2040 demands, we expect it to rain pretty flat. We don't, from where we are now, it's gonna go up a little bit, but it'll also be offset for the fact we're going to develop recycled water, so that'll offset some of those future demands. And we'll keep that rain flat because of conservation, and we're gonna continue our efforts. Minimal residential growth as we anticipate, nothing substantial. And again, recycled water's gonna be added in, that'll offset some of the current potable water needs, so that'll keep that potable water demand down. Then we have SBX 7x7, which is the, which was done during the term of Arnold Schwarzenegger, where they required us to conserve 20% off of our potable demands by 2020. And to determine that, which is part of the report, you had different ways you could determine what your goal would be and how you would accomplish that. And our methodology we chose was the 10-year average window, it gave us the lowest GPCD for our residents, as far as, and that's gallons per cap of the day per resident, that's what we're using. And so, that's the lowest target that we could, we had, so we chose that versus a five-year or 15-year window. Water conservation goals that are based off that measure, so by 2015, we had to conserve and get down to 296 gallons per cap of the day from where we were, based on our 10-year average. By 2020, we have to get down to 2,663, that's our ultimate goal. Currently, we're actually 246, so we've actually exceeded the goal that we've, that we required by 2015 and the goal by 2020. However, even though we have met that goal, we still need to maintain it. And that's where the additional recycled water for certain customers that we have will help keep that level down. Also, especially when we come to our customer, which is one of our primary ones that's gonna use recycled water, is going to be the cemetery. Currently, they have about 150 acre feet of water they use. We'll also have the LMDs in the hillside area, those have, will have a system that is gonna provide and convert the irrigation from potable water to recycled water, so that'll have a big impact to help us keep the level of conservation that we're already achieving. System supplies, we have, we purchase water. CDA would take 1,000 acre feet a year, that's a take-or-pay contract. Arlington, our minimum take-or-pay contract is 4,400 acre feet. We can take more if we need it, but our minimum is 4,400. It can actually produce, that plant can produce, if we need it, up to 7,000 acre feet. So we have capacity if we needed additional water. Groundwater, you know, we will fluctuate between 1,000 to 3,000 acre feet a year, depending on where our demands are, but we have that capacity to pump up to 3,000 acre feet if we need it. Recycled water, it has not yet been permitted. We're currently working on that process and developing our ordinance and operations plan that we're gonna submit to the state for their review and approval. That hopefully should be done, at least submitting it to the state by early July or the end of July, so we get that approval so that we're ready to go. When we actually get recycled water from the Ripper Plant, we're already permitted to do so. We have emergency connections with JCSD and City Corona to take water if we need to on an emergency case basis. Reliability assessment, you know, this is where we wanna determine if there's anything we're vulnerable in relation to, if there's droughts, how vulnerable are we? And we had to assess that based off of average year rainfall, which we're not vulnerable, meaning our supplies are so reliable because it's from groundwater versus imported water, which comes from storage and reservoirs that's piped in. We're not impacted whether or not there's, we have a pretty good pools that we come from in the basins that we pump from, even with not having a lot of rainfall, they are recharged through other means, and that, it's been fairly reliable. So on an average water year, we're liable. On a single dry year, where we get no rainfall, we're not vulnerable. And even on a multi-dry year, even what's going on with the drought, we still have reliable sources. And that's what we're conveying to the state, is we have a pretty reliable sources of water that doesn't impact Norco. We have, you know, more than 100% of the average of supply available for every year. Like I said, we're projecting, our demand is gonna be around 7,000 acre feet a year, but we have over 10,000 acre feet a year available to us. But that's without even purchasing water from that if we needed to on an emergency case basis. So we have surplus through 2040 at this point, and the additional cycle of water improves our reliability. And then, but it will require that we can continue to replace our wells, which is part of the reliability as they get older, which they are aging, we will need to reconstruct them or build new ones to replace them. But that's to ensure that our own local supply is readily available. And for water shortage planning, we already have an ordinance in place where we have five stages of water shortage we can declare, and we have and we are currently in stage three for conservation. Stage one is basically a voluntary reduction in usage, where stage two through five is an increasing mandatory reduction in usage. Currently in stage three, which mandates a 30% mandatory reduction in usage. Consumption reduction methods, we have some permanent that we have instilled in our ordinance as far as how you, you can't operate a fountain on your property unless it's recycled. You know, there's various measures that we have in the plan that makes it permanent, you cannot do it any longer. We have some that are voluntary, i.e. involuntary conservation in saving water, then we have some mandatory reductions that get implemented when we do certain stages. Rebates, we also have rebates for water conserving devices that are available through western municipal water districts, so that's one way we try to, again, and will always continue to try to incentivize customers to conserve and replace inefficient devices. The financial impacts during shortages, there certainly is an impact to us, especially with take-or-pay contracts. They create an issue where we have to take the more expensive water versus using our less inexpensive well water. So there does, there is an impact to us that we just identify can't occur when we're dealing with water shortages because we're having to conserve. And then we also have emergency connects available if needed, so this is what ensures that we still have the water available if we need it as far as when there's a water shortage. Man-management measures. Man management measures, you know, we have the water waste ordinance that we have in place that helps us ensure that we can reduce the amount of water that's demanded, on demand anytime. We have the AMI meter system that we put in four or five years ago, and that's an important system because it has the ability to communicate to customers on issues related to, they might have a leak on their property because it'll show them that there's water running on their property. We also, we get that information directly. We can and shall implement a mechanism or program to where we actually getting that information out to the customers. So there, because if you're not online, if you're not looking at that data, and that portal's not available, you really don't know. And part of what we're going to do in one of the positions the council approved a few months ago is we have a person that's going to come in, is one of their many duties is to manage that data that comes in and develop a mechanism to actually communicate to the public when we see that there's a potential leak on a property, that they're actually looking at that data. We can send them a letter saying, hey, you might want to check something on your property. It appears that there's water always running. So there's a mechanism there, there's data there that helps us help customers manage their water. Always we're trying to do public outreach and education. A lot of that's done through Western Municipal Water District, through their services they provide for, on our behalf as a member agency, a Met member agency. Again, as I indicated before, the rebate programs that, from Western. Conservation, we also get conservation through just the natural progression of building codes as they require more efficient toilets be installed. They just naturally go through the evolution as folks build or replace things in their house. That's all that's available at Home Depot or Lowe's. So you get conservation automatically through those types of efficiencies that are done just through building codes. So that, those are automatic demand measure, measures that we account for. And then general plan adoption and submittal. So in general, Norco has met the requirements of the Management Act by preparing the plan and the end that we are showing that water rely, we are self-reliant in our water demands. Norco has met the requirements of the Water Conservation Act because we have our water conservation ordinance. We're conducting a public hearing today. And upon adoption, the plan will be submitted to the Department of Water Resources. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions we have regarding the plan itself. Do we have any questions from council?
I got a couple.
Greg?
First one's going to be real easy because I was a little shocked. I was going to ask you, were there any significant changes in our urban management plan from the past? Or any changes in the format?
In a way, yes.
That one's fairly easy. And Chad, I want to compliment you on, on this draft, the way you outlined the tasks. Honestly, you did a really, really good job.
Thank you.
On it. Just a couple little questions, and you and I had discussed this. 3.4.1, other demographic factors. That paragraph, the last two sentences, the way it reads is, "The majority of new residential development will be built within this density range, which is our minimum half acre, two units per acre." Then it goes on to, "Medium-density residential with 8 to 20 units per acre exists to a smaller degree within new growth areas. Single-family residential is planned between single-family neighborhoods and higher-density housing, providing a smooth transition." Since this is a draft, I would like to ask the council to strike reference to medium-density residential, 8 to 20 units per acre, and just go period and take out all within new growth areas and any reference to higher-density housing. Just not to have any ammunition laying around.
And I understand where the councilman's coming from, and that can be done. It's just referencing, for example, senior housing. That is a multifamily, high-density. So if, for example, we were going to build any additional senior housing, high-density, that's basically what that's kind of referring to. I understand the, maybe the concern is it goes towards the smaller lots, smaller houses, you know, within the single-family resident range, you know, versus the half-acre lots that we currently establish. So I wouldn't be, it wouldn't affect the report if we eliminated that sentence or if we chose, so chose to. But I wanted to just give my perspective of why it's there. But it holds us to nothing. But again, it wouldn't affect the report in the content if we did eliminate that choice of the council.
And my reference is not to senior housing, it's more to the general plan, which is just small-plot agriculture, animal keeping. So like I said, I just don't want any ammunition laying around. So, and that, if council would concur with that. Then my last question is on the following page, 4.2, water uses by sector. No page number, but right above the graph, that table 4.1, the city currently has two infill housing projects planned of approximately 20 to 30 single-family units. I only recall one.
Yeah, and you're correct. That was an error in the report. It is one. And as you contacted me earlier in the week, we didn't verify, yeah, that was just simply an error. It should have been one.
That's all I have. Good job.
Robin?
So mine's kind of for public information, I think, Chad, and clarification as well. In chapter eight, 8.1, it talks about your water shortage contingency planning, and it talks about stages of action and about, right before the bullet points start, it talks about all the requirements of the city's water conservation ordinance are in effect during normal water conditions, and then it lists all of them. And those, I think, for the most part, those of us here are familiar with, like you can't wash down your sidewalks, you have to adjust your sprinklers, you shouldn't irrigate between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., so on and so forth. My question to you is kind of too bold. First, are there ways that we can better educate our residents to the existence of these? Because like, and it seems to be lately, I've been driving around and during the day, people are watering their lawn and doing that kind of stuff. And then the second part of my question is, what is the enforcement of these particular rules, or how does that work?
As far as outreach, that's just a function of, of our resources, whether or not we get information out. We can do a passive type of information. We put some bill inserts every once in a while, reminding the folks that here's certain things that you are mandatory, you cannot do at all times, and provide the literature that way. And that's the most common way to do it. Since we don't have any type of conservation resource officer, there's not a lot of opportunity to do, I guess you'd say, like landscape classes or things like that. Those, the information is through Western, but, and we can get material from Western also regarding specific devices or ideas. And we can also, in our inserts, add their classes, things that are available to them that's available because we're a member agency through them, that they can attend or be part of or get rebates. So it's really just getting the material in front of them any way we can, and that's one, and one way. In regards to enforcement, we can, there is no enforcement directly because again, it's not staff. We do indirectly, when we do get calls, we will try to go to that business or residence and at that time remind them of what the city's ordinance that's currently adopted, what phase we're in, what restrictions there might be. And then again, we try to pass them, just say, listen, if you could work with us and cooperate. A lot of them just go, I didn't know. And we'll just give them the type of material, just reference that. We'll note for our own that we've gone there before because if it becomes a problem situation, we can say that we've gone here two, three times. And we could choose at that point, because we do have in our ordinance and in state law, we can make it a finable offense, you know, if they fail to curb the issue that it affects. We just try to use the most passive way possible, and it usually, most of the time, always works.
Well, and I figured the violations that I see are probably just people don't know. So, all right, thank you.
Ted?
You know, I guess I, I concur with Councilman Newton on that, the houses and the, well, I understand why you put it in there. When I first looked at this, when you gave us that big packet last month, I go, okay, here goes another state-mandated report that's going to sit on the shelf for another five years. And because that's what the state does, it's bureaucracy. But I'm interested, now you said we need, we get these, we can utilize this information for grants and additional funding is...
One of the stipulations from Department of Water Resources or other state agencies is that you, in order to get some of the grants that they may be offering, is you have to have an adopted or a more managed plan. If you don't, they, they can choose to not grant your application. And so it's just one of the things they stipulate in a lot of the applications, it will say that you must have an adopted or unmanaged plan because they want to remind people that this is part of the, it's within the state water code that you have to have this plan, and it could impact your ability to get, to get those grants.
So we haven't been penalized in the past for not even having this, right?
Right, because I don't think we have ever applied for a grant related to water yet.
Okay, well, that's good then. Hopefully now, if we adopt this, go ahead and get a grant or two, get a recycle.
That'd be really nice.
Thank you.
Berwin?
Yeah, it's a good report, Chad. You guys did a good job. But I had basically the same question about conservation. You already answered it with Robin's, but one of the things you noted there a while ago is that on the purchased water, that we purchase so much every year. So every year, we, we have to take so much of that purchased water, or do we turn around and sell it to somebody else?
We don't sell, we're not a wholesaler. We don't sell it to somebody else, other than our own customers. And our, to give you, we have total minimum demand we have to take is 5,400 acre feet. And right now, we're only at about 6,300 in our demand. So you can see I can, I have to take the more expensive water, and I can only use about 1,000 acre feet of my own groundwater, which is cheaper. So like I said, if I can change that ratio, if I could sell it to somebody else or have somebody else take our obligation, then it benefits us where I can use our wells. But that's, that's our ratio, at least right now, is that we're, those take or pays come first as far as trying to meet those obligations. Otherwise, we pay for it and didn't even take it. So that's kind of where we stand.
And the more we take then, the less that well water we have to take, that, I mean, the less of our well water we have to use.
Right, well, yeah, by default.
The one that's hot, that everybody complains about.
Yeah, I mean, there is a benefit to taking the import water because it is cool and the customers do appreciate the fact it's cooler water. So there is a benefit to it. But again, as you know, we do have plans to mitigate that issue with those wells as far as trying to treat some of the issues that are, that are in the current well, plus trying to build our reservoirs to help cool down that water. Because if I can, I want to use our cheaper, cheaper source of water. And but I also want to mitigate the issues, which is contamination that's existing and the fact that it's hot water. So, and we have a plan in place to try to do that. It's just trying to implement that with the available funds that we have remaining. So we're trying to do, some of our plans are on hold because we don't know what the future lies as far as our revenue sources. So, but we do have that plan in place and we're moving in that direction, but at least it's designed to get that work done, whether construction occurs. But again, the reality is, no matter how much I want to use my well water, I'm still stuck with the take or pays. If we can somehow move beyond those in any manner, it, I would use the well water, which gives a savings overall.
Well, one more question. And I didn't know this till today when I was over there, that gentleman had that problem with that connection. Does all commercial businesses have to have two water meters?
Yes, one for domestic and one for irrigation. And then it could have possibly also a fire line if the fire department requires it.
Okay, because he was telling me that both those were his meters, and one was for irrigation. I didn't know they had to separate it and everything. All right, thank you much.
You're welcome.
Good report. I'm really excited to see it. We talked about it several years ago, doing something like this. And it was actually well-written. It was actually, it was entertaining in a way. I was sort of like, wow, that's pretty interesting. I didn't know that one. Wow, I didn't know that one either. So any other questions for Chad? Do we have any cards on this subject?
No cards on this item.
All right. I'm going to open, anybody last chance, she wants to speak, fill out a card. I'm going to close public comments, bring you back to council. Do we have any motions, comments? Second?
Councilmembers Gronmeyer, Hannah Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to six, yes.
All right, just for clarification, just because it wasn't part of your motion, did you want that one sentence removed from the report?
Two sentences.
For two sentences?
What do we do? Do we just take them out? All right, I make a motion that we approve this with the exception of those two sentences.
Thank you.
Go ahead, here's a second.
Councilmembers Gronmeyer, Hannah Hoffman, Newton, Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now moving on to 6A. Appointments to various city commissions and Economic Development Advisory Council. City Clerk.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, this item is consideration of appointments to two commissions and the Economic Development Advisory Council. I think I may go up there as well. There are three scheduled vacancies, one unscheduled vacancy as a result of a resignation by Mr. Ed Dixon. And what the City Clerk's office did is included it in our regular scheduled vacancy recruitment for the commissions. We have, of the scheduled vacancies, we had two on the Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Richard Boyle and Mr. Jeff Kahane. For the Planning Commission, Ms. Patricia Hedges. The City Clerk's office did reach out to those commissioners, notifying them of their terms to end in June 2016. Mr. Richard Boyle did note that he was not seeking reappointment. The Norco municipal code does state the requirements to serve on a city commission, which are, those requirements are noted there. The exception with the Economic Development Advisory Council is that those members are not required to live in Norco, but they should have a significant stake in the success of the business community. Recruitment began on April 18th through the release of a public notice. The deadline given was May 26th at 6:00 p.m. So it was almost a six-week recruitment. During that time, the City Clerk's office received a total of five applications. After the closing of the recruitment period, one application was withdrawn. And so here noted there, you have your, your four applicants that you'll be considering this evening. So again, for Parks and Recreation Commission, both of those appointments would be for a four-year term. Jeff Kahane and Melissa Woodward. For the Planning Commission, it is also a four-year term. For, and the applicant there is Ms. Patricia Hedges. For the Economic Development Advisory Council, that is an unscheduled vacancy. So this appointment would be to fill the term which ends June 2018. And with that, if you have any questions, I do have voting ballots when the council is ready to vote. I also reached out to the applicants, some are here tonight, to speak.
Just as a matter of record, Jeff Kahane's wife fell ill and he had to take her to the hospital tonight. I don't know if she called, but... So any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, if it's possible, if the applicants would like to speak first before we...
Mayor, I do have cards, if you would...
Okay, let's hear the cards.
Pat Hedges.
Hello, all of you. I want to thank you for your consideration for me. I've enjoyed my time on the Planning Commission. I feel like I've contributed to some of the really nice projects around town. I look forward to continuing working on the Planning Commission because I know there's some really good projects coming up. And I also appreciate the City Council. I don't think you're told this often enough, at least recent City Council, that you back our commission, and it really makes our job a lot easier, and we're happy to know that. It doesn't always happen, but when it does, we're happy. So I ask for your consideration, would like to be on the Planning Commission again. Thank you.
Tina Gregory.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. I'm Tina Gregory, I'm a Norco resident and also an applicant for the EDAC position. So I decided to apply for this position for a couple of reasons. I, first, based... I, first, based on encouragement from the council and mayor for residents to, you know, step forward and apply when these seats come available. So with that offer, you know, and encouragement, I went ahead and bit the bullet. The second thing is I did some time researching the EDAC role and I felt like with the objective of the committee and understanding the city's desire to develop Norco into a destination, already work underway, but certainly always opportunities to continue to develop, I felt like I may have some skills that could really bring some benefit to this advisory council. So just a little bit about my experience, I've been in the tourism, hospitality and travel industry for 22 years. I have experience with hotel, contract negotiations, airlines, ground transportation. I've worked in the tour operator wholesaler business, if you're not familiar. These are, these are wholesalers that consolidate different products based on negotiated rates and they sell them as a package type of travel offering. That's sort of a destination oriented business. However, when I think about Norco, I relate that larger scale to something that's a little more specialized and it can always be shaped in a way that we could still take those kinds of business practices and business opportunities and find ways to, you know, bring those opportunities here as potential businesses and if nothing else, get more people to come here by virtue of what we have to offer as a destination, which would include things like experiences, right? Because we have challenges with what kinds of businesses we get, but we, we have something unique in the kind of experiences that we could provide to people that come here. And creating that sort of memory and experience is a rather low-cost investment, but really big on making an impression. So that's, that's the nature of where I'm coming from with the skillset. I will let you know that for the last 17 years, I worked for Disney in theme parks and resorts, I'm a business technology manager. I run project and programs implementing software for hotels, the Walt Disney Travel Company, Cruise Line, and other aspects of sales, including CRM, so marketing and customer management, information management. So in my time there, I, I've stayed very close to the trends within the industry and I experience all aspects of it because with our systems or our software and technology, it's an end-to-end implementation of a solution. So you, you experience everything from sales to operations, fulfillment and the actual touch point with the guest. So I, I just wanted to bring that skillset and experience forward and I understand I'm the only applicant, that doesn't mean I get the position, so I thank you in advance for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Woodward.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Melissa, some of you guys are familiar with me and some of you aren't. I've been living in Norco since 98. I do have horses and what, what interested me about the Parks and Rec Commission is also along with having horses and been in horses for 30 years now, I have three young children. So Parks and Rec is something that directly affects me and my family and along with using all of Norco's horse facilities, we also utilize the parks and recreation and the community has to offer. So I definitely, I love Norco, I want to contribute as much as I can to our city because I believe in our city and I hope that you guys appoint me for the position. This, my background is in sales and I, I work from home part, part-time. I work full-time, but part of the time I work from home, so I do have somewhat of a flexible schedule as far as being able to make the meetings and whatever else is required. Also, I know that we deal with, for Parks and Rec, some of the, Jeff was telling me a little bit about it, dealing with the sports and, and stuff and I definitely am familiar with that because all of my kids play sports. So anyway, I thank you for consideration and hope that you appoint me for the position.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Okay, closing public comments, bringing you back to council. Do we have any discussion? Berwin?
Yeah, I was, scooping this chair over. I had sat on that EDAC committee a long time ago and everything and I was sitting here looking, the other day there's 11 members on there, I was wondering about reducing it by one, one member.
New discussion?
Based, you know, and Berwin, I, I sit on there now and there and, you know, I know that in, they added a member to accommodate the chamber position in 2014. I don't know if having an even number is good or bad, it's supposed to break ties. And I understand your, your consideration, you get a lot of people, they don't all show up. And if you're talking about numbers, just, just my feeling on it, the other day when we met, it required to have a forum, it required both council, both Mayor Bash and myself to be there, even though we could not vote on the, on the recommendation. It just felt that, you may be right, maybe we don't need 11 members, maybe we need 10. But it just, it was that point where I'm asked to be there, but I can't give any input because I'm going to vote on it tonight. And it's nothing against the applicants at all, it's just for some reason out of this resolution that we use on 2014-40, either we got to redo this whole thing the way it's set up because we're not following it on the EDAC position. And the way I look at it, it says qualifications shall be defined as appointed, EDAC members are recommended by the EDAC and appointed by the city council. No other commission or advisory committee in this city does that. And I personally, I was embarrassed for the applicant. It wasn't fair to them, it wasn't fair to that committee, that advisory committee to handle that. It's not how you do business and I've done, I've sat on both sides of the interview table and that's just not the way it's done. A requirement, 11 members will serve on EDAC, including one voting member of the Norco chamber, that was the change, and two voting members of the city council. Okay, we couldn't even vote on that day. New members appointed to EDAC will be selected from the business community, members are not required to live in Norco, however, members should have a significant stake in the business of the community. Remember that, significant stake. EDAC members shall serve four years in term of office. So those are qualifications and that was done on that resolution. I don't know about you, Mayor Bash, but I didn't like that interview process at all. And as far as this, the, that's, that's on the, as far as economic development advisory council position, I frankly, I'm going to abstain from voting on that because of the way that was handled and the way it's done. I just don't think it was fair. I don't have a problem with the other commission positions, but Berwin brought up EDAC and that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah.
My reasoning on that was when I was on there, I don't know if there was 11 or 12 or whatever, but seemed like the more you have on the commission, the harder it is to get an agreement to vote on something. That was my findings when, when I was on, I know it's changed a little bit since then, I hadn't been on there in about five or six years, but that was, that was my finding is maybe we don't fill this one and then when the next one comes up, we reduce it one more. Get it down.
Robin?
I am not, I've not participated in EDAC, however, I know I have an advisory committee for my program at the high school and I'm just going to give you a little background on that and what my perspective is. We're told by the state we should have, you know, maybe 12 to 15 people on our advisory committee. However, it specifies in the rules that every program is specialized and you should do what's best for your program. Some of you sit on that advisory committee and you know we are well beyond the 12 or 14 that's recommended by the state. And for us, we look at what does each person bring to the table and what can they offer to do to help our students and our program? Because that's, in my opinion, the role of an advisory group and you want to bring to, you don't want 11 people that are exactly the same. You want 11 people that are different, that have different ideas, different points of view and are, everybody's going to bring something special to the table. And when I look at our advisory committee at the high school, I see that and I can see where each person is specialized and I would, I personally would look at the EDAC and planning and Parks and Rec in that exact same way. What does each of those folks bring to the table that's different and unique? And build from there. I think numbers, in my opinion, are kind of arbitrary and the group is what the leadership makes it. And so, you know, like I said, numbers for me are arbitrary, what are those people going to bring to the table? What is the purpose of the group? I think it's been pretty clear with EDAC that we want to bring business, we want to make Norco a destination city. There's a lot of things that are changing and so that's kind of my, my perspective on what's going on so far.
Greg, anything?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Chad, how many members do we have on streets, trails, utilities now?
Five.
Five? Yeah, I think it's five. And, but we had different committees, so we went from what to what to get to five?
Seven, I believe, the last time.
Seven?
Nine.
Okay.
Nine. But I think it's an attrition issue that we've.
Right, because the, the last time when we had two members that didn't want to go again or whatever, is when we dropped those two. You know, I'm, I'm kind of with Robin on this, I think that. Good discussion brings good results and, you know, the more input you have and the more exchange of ideas, it, it makes for a stronger commission that. But Ted, do you and Kevin vote on issues or are you non-voting on EDAC?
We vote on EDAC.
We just didn't vote on this. Okay. Because we were going to be seeing it. See, I, I even kind of wonder why you vote on, on that commission, that, I can see your participation.
I really vote, it's not really things, like if we have something and this goes clear back to Berwin, if we had something that was coming up that we knew we'd have to vote on, we would abstain. But these are, you know, for me, EDAC is more of a, I mean, what I would like to see, and I guess I'm the longest serving, is I would like to see representatives, brick and mortar people, I would like to see somebody from Silver Lakes. I was very discouraged by the whole nonsense that went on the morning before that and I agree with you, it was unfair to the applicant. I'd like to see somebody from the auto dealerships, I'd like to see somebody from, we used to have two people from hospitality, so we could literally know exactly what was going on at the Hampton Inn at the time. Now we have Fairfield, we've got, I personally would like to, I mean, and I understand, I have been rejected from two commissions and stuff like that and I totally get it, but I really believe what this committee needs is people who are representing those brick and mortar businesses and the specific ones, automobiles, hotels and Silver Lakes. I just really believe that's what we need and I personally would like to reopen this and try to see if we can get somebody from those particular fields. And just, there is a difference, somebody who has invested in the community, invested time, has employees, they have a perspective that I think is valuable and I don't know, you were on it with me for a couple of years and you're on now, you can disagree, but I believe that is what is needed because more than anything, it's an advisory body and rather than us going out, I mean, in the past, you may remember this, Berwin, when we didn't have somebody from one of those fields, depending on who you sent out to talk to, if they had a negative opinion of the city, that, that report came back negative. If they had a positive aspect of the city, it came back positive. I mean, we learned, okay, we don't listen to this report, we listen to this report or we had to go out there by ourselves. And like when we got the hotel people on, all of a sudden, we had a whole new body of information that was very important. I'd love to see somebody from Browning, I kind of agree with you. I'm, I sit on that advisory committee and there's a whole bunch of us and every person brings a unique point of view, so I'm not so concerned about the number, I'm concerned about what they bring. And also, if you look at EDAC, it really says that's what you're supposed to be doing is bringing people that have that investment in the, in the city. So for me, no offense to the applicant, I was actually very impressed with her interview, she has a good skillset, but for me, right now, I think we need somebody from hospitality, we need somebody from the auto mall and we need somebody from Silver Lakes. We have a, what, a 15, 12 million dollar investment in that, in that property. 50,000 people a month are, I mean, on a weekend are actually showing up there. Terms of the park and rec, for me, what is needed is somebody to replace Richard Boyle who is actually very connected, even though his kids are grown up, very, very connected to youth sports. I mean, that's very key for me. That's, truthfully, that's Robin's strength is that she's so connected to youth sports because she has kids that are in youth sports, that's how I got onto the commission was, I knew what was going on because I sat on the board. Terms, I mean, that's kind of where I'm coming from, so for me, I would like to make a motion that we reopen EDAC and open it for 30 days and try to bring in some other applicants. And again, keep trying, keep trying, keep trying.
Excuse me, mayor. Not to take away, but I still have the floor and I was.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Asked questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And the point I was trying to get to is that EDAC right now has 11 members, correct, on that? That's what we advertised for, but I would think in a lot of cases that you and Ted, so minus two that don't vote all the time, you're back to nine members. So, and I think that's a doable commission. And like I said, that, you know, you need that exchange of ideas now, and, and that's what I was trying to ask, was, was that size. Now, if you're, if you're going in a different direction, then, then I'm going to disagree with you on this because I think it's, Berwin, you remember the old saying, you know, about horse racing, you know, it depends who shows up for the race. And that, you had a, you know, a public application time, that's just not right to change the rules, you know, this far into the game.
Just so you know, we've done it many times.
Yeah, and, but Kevin, you know, this, you know, you and I have talked about this like for years and years about when we'd sit in that audience and we'd go, we're going to get our chance. So we get our chance and we see what happened in the past, okay, that, you know, it's shitty. And so now it's our opportunity now to go, and I've heard you 100 times, you know, keep trying, keep applying, keep applying. And so now we have the opportunity and then you get new people that come in and apply and you're going to change the rules at the last minute? I just.
That's, that's, just so you know, that's your opinion.
It is my opinion.
And I'm good with that. I don't have a problem with the applicant. If that's the way the council wants to go, I'm good.
That, yeah, that is certainly my opinion.
All I can tell you is, sitting on the committee, I can see what we need. We need to have representatives from those and EDAC very clearly says you have to have a significant investment in the community. But that's fine, I mean, I'm, I'm good with what you're saying.
No, but work on that as a commission. You have a new member that can also now help you to, you know what, you do, you need representation from services, whatever, hospitality, on and on and on. How do you as a group attract those type of members? Anybody else?
Kevin, and to answer Berwin's question about the number of members. Kevin, and, and to answer Berwin's question about the number of members, Roger, how many subcommittees do we have?
I believe we have six at this point.
We have six subcommittee meetings. To reduce the numbers would really significantly impact the work of those six subcommittees. Because right now, the average subcommittee has three people on it. And they, a lot of us go on two or three of these subcommittees. And so, it would be, it would, to reduce it is not going to help any. It's like Robin said, I, I think, my whole thing is the process that was used for, in this election and how it was done. But I, I do agree that we do need, like Kevin says, we need people from those industries here on that EDAC committee that would help. And I was impressed with the applicant's background in hotels and business. I didn't realize that until she went through the interview process. But again, my objection is not to the applicant, my objection is how it was done. We need to change this resolution and I would, we look forward to seeing that as an agenda item to change how the applications are handled in the future.
I agree with Greg. I don't think that changes should be made when there's applications on the, on the table. If changes are to be made, they need to be made at the end of tenures or whenever the commission comes up, those types of things. Just in fairness and equity to people. And then I guess to speak to you wanting these other people on the committees, maybe the commission needs to look at going out and talking to those people that they want and getting those people to apply. It's a big deal for these folks to fill out these applications, turn in this paperwork, go through interviews, or whatever processes they have to go through. And you're asking a lot of people to do this. It's intimidating, scary. Believe me, I went through my first process a little bit ago, so I understand. But if you want Browning Dodge and you want, you know, Hampton or whatever, those people will come if personal connections are made and they're reached out to and they're talked to and encouraged. And I don't know necessarily that that's been done. I think sometimes we shoot for the stars and we want the president of Hampton or we want this, where maybe just having the manager come who does all the work anyways and really knows what's going on, instead of having a president that has the people underneath them doing all the work anyways. So I just think we need to kind of tweak the way we're looking at this. And if we want more people to apply for these, then we, either council or commissions or whoever, need to actively recruit people and make sure people understand that, yes, it's hard, yes, it's a lot of work, but it's rewarding. And I think we, some people get so caught up in social media and the constant pounding that we take, that it doesn't make jobs like this rewarding or something that people want to do. And so, I think there's just a lot of different factors and things that, that play into this that, that we should all consider. And, and I agree with Greg. If we're going to change the rules, I don't have a problem with that, but right now is not the appropriate time to, to change the rules.
Berwin, anything?
Did you make a motion there a while ago?
Well, I, I, you know, once again, I, I want to do what's best for the city and I really think that that particular committee needs to have people that have brick and mortar. And it actually says that in the resolutions. I realize that we've only done that. I mean, I actually, for Park and Rec, they once reopened it.
I know several times they've reopened it.
I mean, it's, it's happened. And I realize that people may not think it's fair, but the point is, is that we did have an applicant and she was basically run off. And I have to look at that, that's the truth. And so I think that, you know, we have to have time to talk to these people. Now, I'm good with your arguments. I mean, if Robin and Greg feel that way, that's, I totally understand it. But I sit on the committee and I know what's needed. And that's been a real powerhouse generator for us. But again, I mean, I totally understand. The motion I made is that we reopen it for another 30 days and see if we can get some applicants from the different industries.
Well, if it's your motion, I'll make a, I'll second it.
Under discussion? Yeah, Greg.
Say once again, I believe you're making a mistake and that you're going to send out the wrong message to the residents. It's not fair, it's not reasonable. There's nothing to make this case that, you're, you're making it to a comparison to an applicant, to Parks and Rec, who, I don't know who you're referencing, other than I could assume it's, you know, was a Looney Tune or something, okay? That you, you, you had problems with. And so I don't, I can't make that comparison. Not, and I don't know who you're talking about, but it's, it's like, how is that the same as this?
Well, no, it was just in reference when you said that we, we haven't done it before, that's all. I mean, truthfully, Greg, I'm good with it either way. It's just that, there was a lot that went on prior to that interview. The interview wasn't fair, there was a whole bunch of flurry, and the last, you know what we really don't need is we just, I want to find as, as much of a positive impact as I can finally, as we can, as we can probably get.
Then look at this.
And even this discussion, you're taking it, I mean, truthfully, you're taking, and it's even, I mean, if, if, in fact, you know, let's just call, let's just...
No, this is still under discussion and then, and I have the, the floor to speak. What I was going to say was that you had five members of your EDAC commission make a recommendation. You, you did go through the process. And, and I'm with Ted, I think your interview process and all that is silly and, and you shouldn't do it. It's something you should change on your commission. But you had five members of your, of EDAC make a recommendation to us, okay? And you should be respectful to their recommendation also. Their opinions are, should be respected. You're, you're considering those. And you would think those five members that you work with had a pretty good insight with that recommendation.
I'm good with that.
What, can I ask?
The motion is to re-advertise for the Economic Development Advisory Council vacancy for 30 days. Seconded by Councilmember Hannah.
Can I make a substitute motion?
Oh.
I'll make a substitute motion that we vote with the applicants that are presented to us tonight.
Councilmember Gronmeyer? On the substitute motion to, go ahead and vote. Okay. Councilmember Hannah? Councilmember Hoffman?
Per vocation, this is just on EDAC position.
Vote.
To vote on all of the applicants on the vacancies that are presented tonight, including the two commissions, EDAC and the two commissions. Is that correct? Mayor Portem Newton? Mayor Portem Newton? Mayor Bash? The motion fails. Yeah, so now we go back to the original motion to re-advertise the EDAC vacancy for 30 days. Motion made by Mayor Bash, seconded by Councilmember Hannah. Councilmember Gronmeyer?
No.
Councilmember Hannah?
No.
Councilmember Hoffman?
I understand.
Mayor Portem Newton?
What was Council, I'm getting confused. Council Meyer, what was Robin's vote?
She voted no.
To not re-advertise.
So this...
No.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
That motion fails.
I'm going to make a new motion. Let's, uh, I make a motion that we move forward with the slate as it stands and proceed with that vote.
That was...
What was that?
That was...
In other words, in other words, the motion that Greg originally made. We'll just, let's just, let's just move forward and, and get these appointments done.
Was there a second? Councilmember Gronmeyer?
I'm, I'm, I just want to vote, I'm, I'm remaking it.
Okay. Councilmembers Gronmeyer?
Yes.
Newton? Bash?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. So I will go ahead and distribute the ballots. Please go ahead and sign and print your name on the ballot. Mayor? The results for the Parks Recreation Commission, I have five votes for Mr. Jeffrey Cahan, five votes for Ms. Denise, or excuse me, Melissa Woodward. For the Planning Commission, five votes for Ms. Pat Hedges. And for the Economic Development Advisory Council, we have two votes for Ms. Tina Gregory.
Okay, let's go. Moving on to 5B, or I'm sorry, 6B. Norco Community Center local landmark designation. Hi, Bill.
Hello.
I can't turn it on.
There we go, okay. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm very happy to be before you to talk about Norco's, what will become hopefully tonight, Norco's second landmark property. The Norco School is the property, is now the community center. I wanted to give you a very brief background on this because this is a singularly important property in the city of Norco. I think most of you are aware of Norco's history, that the first subdivisions were made in the early 1900s, around 1909 and 1910, by the Citrus Belt Land Company. They basically sold you a 10-acre farm lot and then said goodbye. It was up to you to figure out how to farm it. It was up to you to figure out where you were going to buy your farm goods, how you, how you were going to raise your crops, get them to market, et cetera. Basically, what they built was a subdivision of Corona. So Corona was the commercial and industrial center for the Citrus Belt subdivisions. And they were basically everything south of Fifth Street. Rex Clark came along in 1923 and he had an entirely different idea for farming of this area. He had a utopian idea that any individual could be, could take five, two to five acres of land and could achieve prosperity through their own ingenuity and hard work and by learning from an opportunity being placed before them. So Rex Clark created his own idea of a farming community, but this was a self-contained farming community. He had a focal point in the middle of the community, which was the Village Center. And here, here is where all the civic and commercial uses were located. The Village Center was equipped with almost anything a landowner would need to sustain a family farm. General store, a pavilion, manufacturing. They also had their own lumberyard, concrete brick, excuse me, concrete block manufacturing, irrigation pipe, pipe manufacturing. And they also had somebody who would teach you how to farm if you didn't know how to farm in the first place. They had an actual demonstration farm where people could go and learn how to farm. And for the most part, Norco developed as a place for poultry farms. So with what Rex Clark provided, the landowner could build a house, construct farm buildings, bring water to his crops, and sustain his family with a farm, largely using North Corona Land Company businesses and organizations. One thing that was missing from Norco at that time was an elementary school. And at that time, there were approximately 125 schoolchildren who had to go to Corona for their education. And this was not in keeping with Rex Clark's vision of a complete, self-contained farming community. So he, in his vision, set about to build an elementary school. And he did this starting around 1924, using the architectural services of G. Stanley Wilson, a very important and notable architect who built parts of the Mission Inn and also was responsible for parts of the Norconian Hotel property. The school opened in 1925 and it was expanded in 1927. The expansion included more classrooms and an auditorium. The auditorium that is there today, however, is a replacement, which was built in the 1970s after the original auditorium burned down. But to the credit of the community, the new auditorium was built to replicate the old auditorium. And the North Corona Land Company built all aspects of the school. And again, using their own concrete block that was manufactured locally to build, to build the school. Another important thing about this school is that it, it, its success and the facilities that it provided to the students were very much the result of community involvement. The PTA, the Chamber of Commerce, the Campfire Girls, even the custodians of the school contributed to the development of that property and the improvement of that property. And the Norco Women's Progressive Club was also very instrumental in providing facilities for the, for the school. So this was very much a community project. In the 1930s, as we all know, the country went into the Great Depression and the WPA came along, the Work Progress Administration came along. And through that program, additional facilities were built on the school property and also to help it operate as a de facto park. Among the really important things that the WPA did was... Among the really important things that the WPA did was, at that time, the school sloped toward Alhambra Avenue. So when the kids were playing on the ball field, if a ball got away from somebody, it inevitably rolled down the hill and into Alhambra Street. The WPA corrected this by building a series of terraces, and the terraces were held up by retaining walls. The walls are made out of natural stone that was trucked in from beach communities, and those walls are still there today. Some of them are sitting in asphalt parking lots, but at one time where the Riley Gym asphalt parking lots are now located was once turfed play areas. So in the, in 1933, I think it was, the Long Beach earthquake resulted in significant damage to schools, and the state legislature passed a bill called the Field Act. And the Field Act said that schools had to be tested for earthquake safety, and those that didn't meet earthquake safety had to be removed. And the Norco School was one of those facilities that didn't meet the earthquake safety standards for schools. So in 1947, they had to stop teaching children at that school. And at that point, the children actually went to the Norconian Hospital, the Naval Hospital, on the old Norconian resort property, and they held their elementary school classes on that facility. Around 1950, or the late 1940s, the school district voted to turn the property over to the, to the community. And the community embraced the idea very readily. They formed a committee, the Norco Community Center Committee, and the Norconian voters voted 322 to 50 to purchase the school and its seven acres of grounds. Very significantly from there, they completely restored the school, they upgraded it, seismically retrofitted it, and commenced to turning it into a community center that could be used by the community for park purposes and for recreational activities. Interestingly enough, the Norco's first community-wide fair was held in 1948, and that was held at the school property. So that was called the Harvest Festival at that time, later changed to the Norco Valley Fair. And as you all know, we've had a Norco Valley Fair occur every year since then. The Norco Community Center was the location where that initially happened for the very first Norco Valley Fair. To celebrate the opening of the community center, the Transit Mix Country Company of Corona built a freestanding arch, which still stands in front of the community center, and they also built a sign monument, which also still stands in front of the community center. And those were made by, with materials and labor donated by that company. A swimming pool was added in 1958. And in that particular case, the Chamber of Commerce was the largest contributor to the pool. The bathhouse was built, was designed by architect, Corona architect Robert Gowdy in 1959, and that still stands on the property. The pool's not in use at this moment, but it certainly could be put back in use again. Another facility on the property is the Scout House. This has had a kind of an interesting and rather twisted history. The idea and the property was actually, or the building was actually initiated in 1963, but it didn't get completed until 1968. There were lots of fits and starts along the way, but it did finally get completed. Another really important thing that happened in the community center was that it was a key location for meetings that were held in an effort to incorporate Norco and make it an independent municipality. The center's fireplace room, which is the Bob and Carleen Room, as it's presently named, was a key location for that. And Norco's first meeting is an incorporated municipality placed in the fireplace room on December 28, 1964. Also, in the early days, the city's administrative staff had their offices in the Park and Recreation Commission, or Park and Recreation Commission's offices, and rather crowded in there from what newspaper reports said. And the community supported the community center as a location, as the city hall. However, in 1967, the Recreation and Park District Board of Directors voted to double the rent, which outraged the city council, and they decided they were going to take their business elsewhere. So they moved across Hamner Avenue to what used to be the Upham Drugstore Building, which is now part of the library today. And that became Norco's second city hall. So the community center has a very important, long, and storied history in the, in the city of Norco, a very important part of the city's history. It is one of the very few elements of the original civic center, civic commercial center that remain. The Norco Store was taken out by the freeway, all the manufacturing buildings were taken out by the freeway, the pavilion was torn down at some point in the past, and all the remains of the original Norco Village is that old Norco, the, the community center building itself and the park and the Upham Drugstore Building, which remain of the original community center. There's also the, the Norco garage is also still present in the community center. So this is one of three original facilities from Norco's history. So the property qualifies for designation as a city landmark. There are contributing elements to the landmark. These include the schoolhouse and auditorium, all of the WPA walls, the section of the original chain-link fence atop the WPA wall south of the Riley Gym, the Transit Mix Arch, the Transit Mix Sign, all the landscaped areas, the pine trees in the landscaped areas, and the pool house. Non-contributing elements include the Scout House, the Riley's Gym, and the play area restrooms and picnic shade structures throughout the park. The Scout House, however, is being recommended to be a point of historical interest. There have been too many alterations to the building for it to qualify as a landmark, but it is nonetheless important historically. And just as a matter of information, a point of historical interest is an honorary designation. It doesn't make it an historical property per se. So our recommendation is that the city council adopt resolution 2016-43, making the Norco Community Center and Park a landmark number two. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Do you have any questions for Bill?
Counselor?
I do. Bill, if we include the swimming pool in there, it's not, we can't use it as a functional pool anymore. So can we do anything with it?
The pool house is the only thing that's designated as the, as a contributor, so the swimming pool itself, if you needed to, could be either removed or turned into something different. But the pool house is considered a contributor to the, to the landmark.
The pool house is non-salvageable either. It means no codes. It'll never be open in the condition that it is right now, and I would be recommending to tear it down.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we designate this, how difficult would it be if we had to remove or tear it down?
You would have to go through a sequer process to do that. So that would be, this would be the point at which you would want to decide either it's in or out.
Was that to me, I would remove the pool.
Okay, that's, that's a decision the council certainly can make.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
You said that we'd have to make that decision tonight about the pool house, to remove it if we didn't want it.
You would basically make a decision that the pool house is not a contributor to the landmark. So it would not be, it would not be part of the community center landmark.
Okay. We need a motion on that?
Yeah, it'll be part of the motion when we...
Okay.
Greg? Brian, are there any other items that you would care to share with us?
Just clarification, and I agree with those walls, the WPA. But the chain-link fencing, a lot of that is not original. So, and we've replaced it during my tenure here, parts of that. So if the chain-link fencing is part of that, I would say you need to remove that as well. The wall, I agree with.
It's not all the chain-link fencing. There's a, there's a segment of chain-link fencing which is of a unique style that was used back in that time period. You don't see it all that well because there's shrubbery growing through it, but, you know, it's, it's a part of that terracing of the property, and at least I felt that it was an element that was worth preserving.
I would disagree.
In terms of this, I'm sorry, go ahead, Greg.
Chain-link fence, pool house, pool, any other? No, and the rest of it, I, you know, I think it's fine, and I agree with the walls. The walls are actually that type of architecture of the WPA. You can see that in a lot of different federal projects that were done back in...
Sure.
And I think it's really, really unique, and as far as an architectural feature. The chain-link fence, as long as it's good, but once it starts to rot out and sag, then I gotta remove it. It's not...
The chain-link doesn't rot, it rusts.
It rusts, okay.
And Bill, good report. I just want to make sure that nothing snaps as sequoia-wise.
Now, and Bill and I have talked before, part of the, the interior parts of the building, those things are, we can make adjustments and renovations. The exterior, we have to go through a process to deal with that.
Right.
And I really, I, I think we have a very unique exterior elevation there anyway, so they're just those three items.
The sequo process, which you have to go through anyway, and I'm not defending them either way, but whenever, there's a lot of misunderstanding about that, and it really isn't quite the boogaboo because it would always come back to this council anyway, and you could always do some sort of, you would always do a programmatic agreement or whatever. But the point is, is that it's not that big of a deal.
Yeah, basically, if you wanted to do something to the, whatever the contributing features are, if you wanted to do something to them that would significantly alter them in some way that took away their historic character or demolish a, an element that was designated as a part of the landmark, you'd have to go through a sequer process. However, at the end of the process, the council could find, make a finding of significant overriding considerations, and at that point, you could, the council could go ahead and allow the destruction of something that is, that is otherwise designated.
And your only problem is if you get an instrument party that comes in and says, oh, this is really valuable, la, 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 la. And the truth is, is what you simply do is you honestly acknowledge what happened there and maybe put up a plaque.
It does, I will say, I will say this, though, it takes time and it takes money to do that. So you, if you're, unless you're really serious about designating something, that's something that you want to take into consideration. It takes about a year, and it takes public hearings and all kinds of things to make this happen.
I'll give you two examples. The Norconian litigation, that's, that's sequo.
Yeah, but you're not going to have somebody that's going to send, we're talking about the pool house, you're talking about the chain-link fence.
Second example is the freeway. And all that took was somebody saying, we don't want the freeway to go through and participate...
Well, it was a little bit more than that. You had the whole town that was fighting that.
Yeah, but it was not...
And then, but then you also went through the sequel process with the Norco Store.
No, my point is that you had a council, Norco had a council after that that changed their mind, and because there was a single individual still remaining in the lawsuit, couldn't simply dismiss it and go on.
Anyway, I'm not force-saving those things. I just want to make sure everybody understands it's not that big of a deal for those three items. So any other comments? I make a motion to approve...
Mayor, excuse me, I have two cards.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Matt Potter.
Hi, Matt.
I know it's late, though.
No, no, I'm, I'm good.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I think Bill has established why the community center is important historically to this community. And I had some of the same misgivings about, including some of the, the things you guys are talking about, and I can understand if you'd want to take those out of the designation. My biggest point is why this should be done and why I pushed this through the commission is that there are other properties in town that may qualify as landmarks, but the city's ordinance has always been set up to, so that those privately owned properties, their participation was on a voluntary basis. We didn't want to force anybody into anything, so it's all voluntary. But as a property owner in the city, you know, the city of Norco has to set an example. We can't expect someone else to want to list their property as a historic landmark if we're not willing to do it with our own properties. So, and you know, the, the school is, the community center is, you know, after the Norconian, it's iconic property in Norco. So I felt it was important that we made a statement that we, you know, are interested in protecting the cultural heritage and the cultural fabric of this community. And I think it'll encourage, there's not a lot of houses, as you know, in Norco that retain a lot of the integrity, but there are some, some of the private properties. And, you know, we need to start expanding our historic preservation program into the community and, and get more people involved, and this is a way to do it. Thank you.
Pat, over straight.
Your hair looks great.
Thank you, it's Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Our chairman voiced everything so eloquently, and thank you, Bill, for bringing all that history. Beside the hotel, I just think this piece of property is iconic, and it's just charming and wonderful, and if we want to have a wonderful museum venue, that's the perfect place. And yes, if we don't start with this one, we may not get cooperation from throughout the city, but I just think it's the proper thing to do. It's a beautiful piece of history, and I really relate to it. I go back to the 40s, so you know, the 30s and 20s aren't that far removed from me. And when I think, growing up in Los Angeles, the buildings that I remember as a child that were bulldozed down because they didn't have a sense of history were just terrible, you know, to lose. And I just think we need to get this one on our historical list properly. And as a commission, a member of the historic commission, I'd like you to put it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other comments from council? I'm assuming there's no other cards. Second, well, with a substitute motion in that we do not include the fencing, pool house, and pool. Primarily, what we're seeking to save is the community center building itself and the WPA walls. And they stay. Oh, and the, the transit archway. And then also, when I say the building, I'm assuming the front, the walkways, I don't think are original, except the one area, but...
We're basically talking about the exterior of the building and the parklands that surround it.
Good, so I second that.
Councilmember Skornmeyer, Hannah Hoffman, Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any city council, city manager staff communications?
Mayor?
Yes.
Couple, real quick, I know it's late. Just update the feedback signs. We've been testing the last couple of weeks, and we're going to be putting those in next week on North Avenue, so you should see those up and functional.
That's the feedback, the blinky thing.
Those are your speed.
Those are great. Can I run Pedley?
Well, yeah, we have two that's, that we also purchased that will be moved around the city to try, to try to get data and also to, to see how it impacts drivers in certain areas and see if maybe other permanent ones are justified. So those will be going in. You, I just put in front of you a new CCR that's going to go out, it should have been, it should go out in the mail this week. So we did a complete redesign of that. Hopefully, it provides a little more information for the public regarding water quality, conservation, some other items. So that's available for you. And then also, I did want to let you know that all the work we did regarding the traffic mitigation in front of Silver Lakes with the, with the cones and modifying both on Citrus and on Sliceman, all that work was actually reimbursed by Baboa. They offered and paid us for that work, including engineering, so that has been completely reimbursed. I just want to make sure the council and the community knew that, that work was reimbursed by Baboa.
Do we have any other comments from staff, city council? Yes, Ted.
Steve, how's our Norco Hills specific plan update coming?
We are, I am, I am working towards, there's only two, so it's silly to say we. I am working to get that to Planning Commission in July.
Okay. And I guess I... And I guess my other thing is, I like to see us agendas in the future, the resolution 2014-40, so we can fix this interview process here before we go again.
That's a motion?
That's a motion. Second.
Councilmembers Gronmeyer, Hannah, Hoffman, Newton, Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then my third, I know we have code cases. I see violations occurring in the city, and I hope that we're taking care of them normally. We got updates, but there are some that are going on in this town that have been going on for over a year, and you hear complaints, and you see complaints, wonder what the heck is going on. So hopefully, even if we get updates somewhere on some of them...
Yeah, you know, we, the city attorney's office provides the updates to the ones that we're handling. If there's something specific, either through staff or through me, I'm happy to give you status, anytime you want it.
And I know, that's not, my, my point is on this is that for some reason, we see the code case, we, they start, you can see a red tag on a building, the guy, the owner still continues, and we do nothing. So anything we can do, I mean, if it means tear the damn thing down, so we tear it down. But it was, we'd have, for some reason, what I see is we have no teeth. That's just my personal comment on it.
And Greg?
I'll just jump on Ted's real quick, that there are teeth, and then I think we have to have the resolve to do it, and we've had this discussion before, that if they want to violate the stop work order, a lot of jurisdictions, bring the sheriff with them, and they put bracelets on them. The other is, you contact Edison and have their power shut off. And so we need the fortitude to take those actions, but they are available.
Anybody else?
Well, I'll agree, I'll agree with Greg on that. We've had this discussion before because I know some of the things that were supposed to be stopped and got completed, nothing was ever done with them.
Robin, City Manager? All right, I'm going to close this meeting with a moment of silence for the 49 people that were murdered in Orlando, Florida. This meeting is adjourned.